Good afternoon. Welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners Staff Meeting. And yes, we are meeting on a Wednesday. I'm going to ask the diocese to introduce themselves.
Kristy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Streighouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Hamilton, I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Okay, we have a presentation on COVID-19 with our Health Commissioner Greg Kesterman. It's been a while. I hate that we only get to have you up here. We talk about COVID. We got to have something else, some other, some other things for you to talk about. But you're here with a COVID update, COVID-19 update. So welcome back.
That's correct. Thank you, Commissioner, for having me. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. The last time I was here was back in May, and the significance of that is on my first slide. But that was essentially the end of the national emergency or the public health emergency back, back May 11th. This slide talks a little bit about as that emergency ended, we saw many of these services like vaccinations and testing really going back towards the private provider system, just like our healthcare system was designed to do with flu and other seasonal illnesses. And the last word, we never really talked about back in May or before, but the word endemic, which really means COVID is here. It's going to, from here on out, have likely a seasonal, seasonality to it, just like other respiratory illnesses. And so as we kind of move to the future, we're kind of gearing up to have that mentality. To put COVID-19 into perspective, this is a very familiar slide that I, that I shared throughout the pandemic. This is COVID cases by over time. And really, I'm going to zoom in on that three-month period, but you can see, you know, back in the end of 2020, or I'm sorry, the beginning of 2022, that spike of COVID activity that we saw, that was actually the introduction of the Omicron variant of COVID-19, which I'll talk about here in a few minutes. Back then, we saw over 3,000 new cases a day, which was huge. When you zoom in, you can see the significance today compared to then is much, much less. We're actually on a downward trajectory right now. Back at the beginning of September, we were seeing between 100 and 150 new cases a day. And right now, we're much closer to 50 new cases a day. So definitely a much better spot even than September, but really, the significance of the illness has been much less. Switching over to hospitalizations, this is a slightly different slide than what I shared with you previously. Many of the data sources as the emergency ended have shifted. So this is generated by my team and less of the regional presentation that I gave. This is Hamilton County residents. You can see it from pandemic start to present. And once again, you know, when you looked at the end of January, beginning of February 2022, we were seeing in Hamilton County only about 30 new cases a day of COVID-19. When you zoom in to what we're seeing right now, we're only seeing about two to three cases of COVID-19 a day. So very, very different. And a lot of that has to do, once again, with that Omicron variant being still what is present within our community as, as we move forward. I do have this one regional slide, just to give some additional perspective. Hospital systems are very much regional organizations. They serve the region. And so this is southwest Ohio. We are seeing about 94 cases per week, or another, another way to say it is about 13 cases a day in the region. So much, much less significant than where we were in the past. Who is getting sick right now with COVID-19? We are able to take a little bit of a snapshot in between the ages of 70 and 90 are twice as likely to get sick with COVID-19 as those who are between the ages of 20 and 70. And it gets even more significant for those over the age of 80. They are three times more likely to get sick. The youngest of our population, those under 19, are half as likely. So definitely COVID-19 is still favoring making individuals over the age of 80 more ill than those who are younger. I mentioned Omicron several times. This is a very complicated chart, but it shows all of the variants of COVID-19, starting with the original strain. And I put the blue box around Omicron, and you can see all the branches really start out from Omicron. Everything still circulating in our community is Omicron-related. Why that is significant is there is some, we talked a lot about it during the pandemic, herd immunity. So when a large portion of the population gets sick, a large portion of the population does have some natural immunity. And that is in conjunction with those of us who get vaccinated. That combined immunity helps keep us as a population sick. No differently than when a senior citizen gets a flu shot, it helps protect the entire population because their significance or ability to get the flu is minimized. The same thing is working here with COVID-19. Looking at vaccinations, so I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation today, we are much more into a private system of vaccinations. Many pharmacies here locally are providing COVID-19 vaccine. In fact, this week, I went to a local pharmacy and got my vaccine on Monday with, with no issue, no wait. I walked up and was able to get vaccinated. My insurance was accepted, and it was easy. I know it is still complicated for those who don't have insurance. Many Medicaid and Medicare providers do accept, are accepted at these pharmacies and other locations. FQHCs in our community still take those, those types of care as well. Testing is still available for folks who want free test kits. They are able to get those at my office currently, but probably even more convenient. The U.S. Post Office has that federal program where you can get up to six test kits per household at no cost mailed to your house. And if you visit US Postal Service dot com's website, there's a signup link to get those test kits mailed to you. So that's great news. And I would actually encourage folks today, while you're not sick, before flu season and respiratory illness season gets in full swing, get those test kits. They last for at least six months. Sometimes they're good for a couple of years, depending on the expiration date. And that way, when you get sick, you have the ability to, to know what you have and to stay healthy. And the very last slide I have for you is really just the message that I have shared consistently over the last three, three and a half years. And that is simple, just keep sick at home. If, if you don't want to get tested, fine, but don't, don't make those around you sick. Don't get those who are fragile or have fragile immune systems or who already have underlying health conditions. Don't give them a reason to have to go to the doctor. Keep sick at home so we're not spreading illness within our community. And so I think that's really, as we noticed COVID-19 turning more endemic or more seasonal, that is really the general message that, that I want to end with today. So with that, I will turn it over for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. And let me also say, I want to thank you, Sharonville, you are, is it Sharonville? I believe it is. We were, I was in Sharonville. You have a partnership or contract to do flu, complimentary flu shots, right? If you're a resident of Sharonville.
Actually, it already occurred, it was, I believe, Monday.
Monday, yeah, okay. That was the only day?
That was the only day that we had it. But any, any resident from Hamilton County was eligible to come and get vaccinated that day.
Oh, wow, that's awesome. I guess my thing is, all that you're saying, and is obviously on the federal government. There were some good things that came out of COVID. One, understanding that public health is super important because public health, to me, has always been on the back burner. You know, for those who don't have the insurance or don't have opportunity to get the information. And it finally put public health on the front burner, obviously, by, I wouldn't say by choice, but probably by force. So how do we not go back to the days, because everybody says, let's get back to things as usual? And I'm not, some of those things, I don't want to get back to. I don't want to get back to the days where some of the places, restaurants weren't cleaning as much, flights weren't cleaning as much. There was a lot of unclean things happening before COVID. And then after COVID, people were running with Spig and Span and cleaning and Clorox and that stuff. I also don't want to get back to the days when public health was on the back burner. And it seems like, just like you were saying, if you want to get that, that vaccine, it's kind of hard to find now. If you want to get a test, you got to, you know, kind of have some money or either try to go to the mail. How can we make it easier, not go back to the days where, you know, unless you really have good healthcare, you can't get, you can't be healthy?
We, so my team works really hard to get messaging out to the public and to make sure that we are that conduit for information, and we will continue to do that. I think every chance we get, I think it's important to lobby for public health, both for our population, which, which means oftentimes, we have to apply for grants and chase where those dollars are taking us towards those initiatives. And so it's really important here at a statewide level and nationally to continue to lobby to make sure that public health can have just a higher base level of funding. I know you guys are working through budgets and those processes, and so that is always forefront in what we do at a local health department level. I have, I said it before the meeting, and I'll say it again, here locally, we are very fortunate to have three county commissioners sitting in front of me that have been very supportive of public health, not just for the last three years, but really for my entire career with Hamilton County. And we're very fortunate as a community to realize that this is a partnership that really helps improve our community.
Thank you. I just want to add, Mr. Aludo and to Mr. Brugan, we just met with our lobbyists, and of course, we've got a lot of, lot of things, and we're looking at putting a federal, I guess, kind of our, what we feel should be the ask. I want to make sure, because I did not bring this up in our meeting with the lobbyists, but I do want to make sure that the public health piece, because I just want to make sure we're getting our fair share, where we haven't, from a percentage standpoint, Hamilton County, we send the taxes up to Washington, but we haven't gotten our percentage for years, not just now, for like years back. But I just think a lot of the innovative things that we were able to do in partnership with public health, I'd like for those to be a part of the narrative that we deliver back to Washington, because I don't want us to get back to those days where if you have great insurance, you know, you get, you have access to, you know, to stay alive, and if you don't, you know, forget about you. And I, in fact, the reason why I was running late, I just came from the hospital, and it's been a terrible situation, and I had to get in touch with somebody at the, at the high level. I mean, we're not, you know, we've got a hospital not changing sheets, not cleaning up the pay, and this person was, you know, a person when they were younger, they were in a big position, and now they're older and they feel like, you know, they're treated like, you know, crap. So we don't want to go back to those, those days where, you know, to be healthy, you've got to have the top-of-the-line healthcare. So public health is critical. We need more people being able to get this next shot so that they don't run into these instances, like you said, because COVID has not completely left.
And if I could, thank Administrator Aludo. I was able to sit down with, with the lobbyists here last week and share my, some of public health's interests, including our funding situation. So I really appreciate the consideration for including public health.
Oh, awesome. Great. So it's included. That's awesome. All right. Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. It's good to see you again. So, and thanks to you and your team for the partnership that you have provided to the county. You know, in the throes of COVID, you were on the front lines. You were making sure everybody had the information to make, stay safe. The other thing that you said, though, was to be kind, and I'm hoping that that has stuck with people as well. Not only stay sick at home, but be kind to one another and show some grace to other people. So you talked, there's been a shift in how people can access vaccines in the community because of the nature of the endemic versus what we were seeing a couple of years ago. So just to put a finer point on that, if a person wants to get a COVID-19 vaccine, the best place to go is either their primary care doc or the pharmacy. Is that correct? Public health is no longer standing up, you know, the clinics or the tents in the driveways to provide vaccine.
That is correct, and I would say, generally speaking, if you don't have health concerns and you just plan to get vaccinated, going to a pharmacy is quick and easy and typically done without an appointment, or if an appointment is needed, it's very easy to get. But if you have underlying health conditions, talking with a primary care physician or your federally qualified health center are certainly great options as well for getting, getting your vaccination.
Okay, so, and I guess it does, I haven't gotten, I hate to admit this, I haven't gotten my vaccine yet, but I will. But, so it does feel a little different, though, if, because with public health, you walk in, you provide, what, name and date of birth, and that's pretty much it, right? So now, you are being required to provide more information?
So when I went to my pharmacy this week and was vaccinated, I provided my insurance card, and just like any other, any other script, they ran that. I had $0 out of pocket and was vaccinated without issue.
Okay, so those, for those, to the Commissioner's point, that don't have insurance, then, what is the option for them?
So it is, it is more difficult, and really, the best option is going to a federally qualified health center. The city of Cincinnati operates them in the city of Cincinnati, and then in the county, there's several other providers, including Cincinnati Health Network.
Okay. Okay, and then lastly, just, last time I got my COVID shot, I also got the flu shot at the same time. I didn't have any significant negative effects. I'm assuming that's still safe to do.
It is still safe to do, and it definitely is a personal preference. I have heard our medical director, Dr. Fagan, say there's science that says if you're going to do that, get it in the same arm. It's slightly more effective, but, you know, I think ultimately the most important thing is getting vaccinated.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for coming. It's always good to see you. Thanks for your updates, because without them, people wonder and they create their own scenario as it relates to COVID-19, and we don't want that to happen. And just you being here, your authority as it relates to the public health, it really helps people that are listening, and I would like to see you, even if it's three months from now, and even if there's no change, you can come and say that there's no change, but certainly appreciate your update. As it relates to the vaccine, no matter which one you had before, this vaccine is universal. I mean, there's only one, right, that you would take?
There, yeah, correct. It's, you know, it's kind of considered like your fall booster, but there is a Pfizer and a Moderna, but there is no recommendation, either vaccine, kind of like the flu shot. You probably don't know which brand of flu shot you got. We're kind of moving into that realm with COVID-19 as well.
Okay. I don't have anything else, but I just thank you for coming, and hopefully I'll see you soon.
Sounds good. Thank you.
With no increase or anything like that, but I at least would like to know it. I know the people would like to know it also. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in the budget process, and already, we do have more asked than we have probably money right now, but I like to always see the total picture. Is there anything we can do? Because I'm very concerned with what you had indicated. Now, going back to you must-have insurance, go to your primary care. I think we're missing some people in that loop. So not that you have to answer now, but if there's something, and I want to put this on the table, I'd like to look at if there's anything we, anything additional that we might be able to do or offer to make it easier or more connected with these, you know, with the vaccine. I know there's others out there. We got shingles, it's a big issue. I know, of course, pneumonia, nose kind of thing. So if you don't have the insurance, it seems to be very difficult to navigate. So if there's something you think of that we might be able to, to do, we have some money left over from ARPA, but if there's something that we could offer, I want to at least be able to have it considered or put on the table.
Appreciate that.
Well, I won't say put on the table, because Bridget is here, and Denise, that's a bad word in Columbus. They lay everything on the table. That means you're going to die. No, we don't want to put nothing on the table. If you have something else that we could consider, I like to, I know I would like to consider it.
Fantastic.
Well, just add a follow-up there. Is there a reason that you are not providing those vaccine, vaccine clinics like you used to?
So around May of this year was kind of the end of all funding related to vaccinations, and along with that, the nursing and all of that went away. So at one point, you know, I think we had 35 nurses providing vaccinations, and that whole, that whole relief package that came from Ohio dissipated. And so that was kind of the time that the federal emergency was ending and kind of the decision to take this back towards more normal.
Yeah. I'll just say, if there's anything, we're not saying we've got to go back to that, but I just want to know if there's anything I'd like to consider it, and maybe yes, and maybe no, but I'd like to consider it. If there's anything you think of, that's what I'm saying.
I will take this back to my team, and we'll put some effort in on these comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Dumas, you had something?
Yeah, I just had a question. How many health centers would you say we have in Hamilton County?
I believe the city has three, and I believe there are four in the county.
That's it?
Total of 11.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Okay, now we're moving to the budget. I don't know, Mr. Aludo, or you want to turn it to Mr. Brugan? How do you want to do it?
I will defer right to, just for sake of time, right to the department. I think first up, we have juvenile court. I'm not sure if the judge or Judge Bloom or if Administrator Igo is going to kick off, but just the folks at home who are watching might know, this is on an annual basis, we, as we get into the budget cycle, we have departments come forward and talk a little bit about their budget as requested for next year. The administration is currently in the process of going through budgets and putting together an administrative recommended budget, which will come to the board in early November, in time for the budget to have, or for the commissioners to hold public hearings throughout the fall into early December and passage of a budget by the end of the year. So that's a little bit of a tee-up for the process, and I'll turn it over to juvenile court.
Welcome, Judge Bloom.
Well, thank you so much, and thanks Administrator Aludo. First, I would have to just tell you, you all have the most clear pictures on your TVs here. They're very lovely, and we're jealous of juvenile court, because we run a lot of things by Zoom. But the other thing I'd just share is I got my COVID and my flu shot yesterday in the same arm, and at Kroger, they gave me $10 off my groceries after getting full. So it really was a worthwhile stop-by, and I use my county insurance. So I'm very thankful for that to all of you. We're here today. Ms. Igo, our court administrator, will be here momentarily to share with you our ask. And one thing I just wanted to make sure you all knew is first, how grateful we are for this opportunity to come and explain where we're coming from, because on paper alone, I'm certain that it's an uncomfortable feeling to think, wait, the juvenile court needs what? And I would just remind you that we are, on top of being stewards of the money that you would give us to run our court, we are also stewards of the children of the city and county, of the families of the city and county. We're partners with, Director Patton is here with JFS, we're partners with law enforcement agencies throughout our county, and we are not only responsible for what happens after someone comes into contact with a government agency, but we are moving towards also being responsible for before, for prevention, for keeping families together, keeping our communities safe, which means helping children voice themselves, get some mental health help, and maybe some other types of help before they turn to other means. And, and so, thank you so much for having us. We truly do appreciate it, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Igo for our presentation.
Thank you, Judge. And on behalf of Judge DeGraff and Reed, she was also intending to appear today. Unfortunately, she has stuck doing the court's business. She's in the middle of a trial, so she asks for your grace. Good afternoon, and thank you, Commission President Reese, Commissioners Dreehouse and Summerau-Dumas, for the opportunity to speak to you today on behalf of the juvenile court. In the last 10 months, I'm sorry, do we have our presentation? There we go. There we go. I apologize. In the last 10 months, under the leadership of Judge Carrie Bloom, the court has worked hard to increase the transparency, improve our work culture, become a more involved community partner, and implement the recommended, recommended improvements by the Council for State Government. We've increased transparency with the public by making our website more user-friendly, by increasing our social media presence, and for the first time ever, we've started conducting public listening sessions. Thanks to the support that you provided back in May, we've been able to improve our work culture by adding needed positions and right sizing pay. We've also improved our internal communications through a monthly newsletter we call the Juve School. Following in the footsteps of the 513 relief bus championed by Commission President Reese, we're taking the court directly to the community. We're participating in events such as the Black Family Reunion, Robes on the Road, and expanding our engagement with new community partners who are actively working to try and keep kids out of our system. As you may recall, in 2020, the court applied for and received a grant for a three-year partnership with the Council for State Government, a nationally recognized organization whose sole job was to analyze how the court was functioning and review the quality of the services that we're providing to the community. In 2022, we received those results, and the hard work began this year to implement those recommendations. As a court, we did not fare well in that report, and one of Judge Bloom's first mandates was that we started implementing the recommendations from the CSG report. Today, the court has seven broad working groups and 15 active committees charged with implementing the recommendations from the Council for State Government. And we believe that the work that we will do, that we're doing now, will take us back to our place as a national leading model in juvenile justice. Some quick insight into the heavy lifting that we have before us. Based upon the 2018 data that the court provided for this study, only 32% of the youth that we were referring to programs completed those programs. Of the, of the children we supported in 2018, 57% of those children were back before the court with a new felony or misdemeanor charge within two years. And even more discouraging, 82% of youth of color were back before the court in that two-year time period. As Albert Einstein said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result." Clearly, what we were doing as a court was not working, and the critical evaluation that we undertook in this three-year project was long overdue, and now, we are doing the hard work to implement those recommendations. Now, the CSG work focused on our delinquency area of the court, but we do equally as important work in our other divisions to address the needs of children and family, childrens and families in Hamilton County, including addressing the needs of abuse, neglect, and dependent children. Every day, we conduct an average of 400 official court hearings, and of those 400 hearings, that translates into about 100,000 court hearings a year. Each and every one of those hearings represents unique, vulnerable individuals with real-life challenges that need to be addressed. As the juvenile court, we can't limit the number of families that we admit, and we can't control who enters our system. We're a repository court, and those 100,000 hearings represent people, not just data points. The paperwork that's generated by those 100,000 hearings is overseen by our juvenile court clerk's office, and it also represents the volume of what drives the other work in the other departments, including our juvenile probation department, our behavioral health department, our assessment center, and the robust diversionary programs that we run, including mental health, school-based programs, and substance abuse and traffic diversion programs, as well as maintaining a 365-day-a-year, 24/7 detention facility. Now, over the last 10 years, being mindful of the limitations on the general fund, this court has attempted to do all that we can do with about the same number of employees. But as the new court administrator, I have to face the fact that well-intentioned past sacrifices have caused the court to take shortcuts, leaving essential tasks undone and resulting in poor outcomes for the families and children that we serve. As a good fiscal partner, we routinely look for options to limit expenses to the general fund, and for our 2024 budget, we anticipate covering approximately 35% from outside sources. But when those resources are not available, or the amount that we project to receive doesn't come to fruition, we have to ask for increases from the general fund, and that's what we're here to discuss today. As we work to do more with less, we also need to ensure that cutting corners now does not cause even bigger, more systemic problems down the road. And that's why we are asking for a total increase in over $10 million to our 2024 budget. A big part of the increase that we're seeking today is to fill vacancies on the organizational chart we inherited at the beginning of this year. When I last stood before you, excuse me, five months into my tenure, I requested 31 new full-time employees for the court. Of the 31 positions that I requested and that you graciously provided to us, we've been able to identify alternative funding to support two of those positions. What I didn't know then was that the additional 32 vacancies on our organizational chart that we were attempting to fill were not only vacant, but unfunded. They became unfunded over time because the court had difficulty in attracting and retaining workers, so obviously, that was not something that the county should be looking to fill when we didn't have a realistic opportunity to fill those vacancies. But today, I'm requesting the funding to fill those positions. We are now competitively situated, thanks to your support, and are successfully attracting and retaining quality workers. Filling the existing vacancies will allow us to catch up on expected standards, including improving our Supreme Court case closure timelines. improving our Supreme Court case closure timelines, revising our staff allocation at the detention center to ensure safety and security, while providing needed services to the children, clearing backlogs of unprocessed work, including addressing unclaimed funds, processing bonds, and purging files. And positioning the court to reopen Hillcrest with a total redesign of its functionality to more adequately address the critical needs of children in Hamilton County in a local setting, while providing the court and county oversight that's needed. We're on target to release the Hillcrest RFP by the middle of November, and we're very excited to reopen Hillcrest next year. Another budget priority for the court is identifying and shoring up significant security gaps in our information technology department. In April, we were fortunate to hire Julius Jasper as our Director of Information Technologies away from the federal courts in Chicago. Julius served as the Systems Administrator and IT Director there for seven years. And Julius now needs more staff and resources to create the technological infrastructure our court requires to meet the obligations to secure and store the personal data that we collect on the 20,000-plus cases that enter our system every year. IT security has been too far ignored, long ignored by the court, and our, most of our systems are at end-of-life and need immediate update. Now, I don't know if you're familiar, Commissioners, with the malware data breach that occurred just up the road in Butler County earlier this year, but Butler County struggled for a week to get their operations back online after a malware data breach. And if we don't do more to secure our data at this time, it's only a matter of time before that problem comes to Hamilton County. The final area of our budget that I would like to highlight today is the need to improve the quality of the service we provide to children at the youth center. Being a youth center resident is never easy and often creates anxiety and stress for the children in our care. These kids are not lost causes, and while we have them, despite their challenges, we are uniquely, we have a unique opportunity and an obligation to try and help them see different paths forward. This year, when Judge Bloom became our administrative judge, one of her first priorities was to improve the quality and quantity of the food and hygiene products we were providing to kids in our care. In the last several years, we've been providing a prison-based menu to the kids, and the quality and quantity of the food we were providing was subpar. Many children were consistently hungry and even resorted to taking food out of the garbage cans. Protein portions were capped at four to six ounces, and starches were limited to half a cup a meal. This year, we've doubled those portions at dinner, and we've bulked up our snacks to twice a day. According to a longtime employee, Ken Delaney, one of our crisis response clinicians, this is the first time in 10 years that kids are reporting they have enough to eat and the food we're serving is palatable. Also this year, we've improved the quality of the hygiene products and the medical care at the youth center, and we're bringing in therapy dogs twice a week. Like all kids, our kids can't learn, grow, or excel when they're hungry and have unmet basic needs. We're proud to say that one of our young residents earned his high school diploma this summer in our youth center through the Cincinnati Public Satellite School we run, and four more youth are on track to graduate very shortly. So we're now working to identify additional training, certifications, and potential college courses for these new high school graduates, yet another new challenge that the juvenile court is facing. Our youth center was designed in the 1990s and is a state-of-the-art facility, and it was designed to house children for a maximum of 90 days. Now, our average length of stay at the youth center is 34 days. However, some of our kids facing serious charges are stuck in our system, and it moves slowly. Some of the children that we care for have been in our care for two and three years. Providing care for children for two-plus years in a building and a system designed for 90 days creates a whole new set of challenges for the court. Longer stays impact the daily operations of the facility, the management of behavior, and mental health. Last year alone, our two crisis response clinicians responded to over 1,700 mental health calls at the detention center. As you can imagine, recruiting and retaining workers in this environment is tough, and we have a statutorily mandated requirement of a 12-to-1 staff-to-youth ratio. We're only currently budgeted for 80 beds a day, but in 2022, our average daily population was 87, and this year, we're tracking approximately 90 kids a day, and sometimes, our population reaches over 100 kids. Now, 10 kids a day may not seem like a big difference, but in reality, it results in over a $1.6 million operating deficit to our budget. Currently, the cost of housing a youth at our detention center is $460 a day, and is a bargain compared to Franklin County Juvenile Detention Center, where the average cost of housing a child for a day is $600. At Hamilton County Juvenile Court, we truly strive to do more with less, and the commitment of our staff to the court's mission and the work that we do for kids is solid and strong. We know the changes we are making now will not only improve the quality of the life at the court and the detention center, but will impact the quality of life in our community as a whole. And quality, as you know, comes with a cost. On behalf of Judge Bloom and Judge DeGraff and Reed and our entire team, I want to thank you, Commissioners and the county administration, for your accessibility and the support that you've shown the court. We know you have limited resources, fiscal constraints, and a lot of tough decisions that you have to make. We know that you will consider our request on behalf of the children and families we serve in Hamilton County with the diligence and passion that you always bring to this topic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to open it up, Vice President Dreehouse, for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Really appreciate it. And I'm going to say at the onset, just to level-set the conversation related to the budget in general, that the one thing that we know right now going into these conversations is that the requests are $40 million over the amount of money that we have to spend. So I just want to say that as a precursor. We said that at the last budget hearing, but I think it's important to level-set because there are, some of the numbers that are being presented to us, not used specifically necessarily, but, but overall, we're going to have to make some reductions. And I don't envy our budget staff having to work through that with all the budget analysts and all the departments. So thank you for putting your numbers in front of us. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on your numbers. So the, and I, I respect the idea, and I appreciate the work that you do. I know it's difficult work, and we do have pockets of employees throughout the county who are doing really difficult work. I would put JV Court in that, one of those buckets of having challenging circumstances, dealing with the young people in this community, and making sure that we're doing everything we can to have them be successful. So this idea that you're trying to right-size your budget and right-size your wages, I can completely appreciate. But I see, and I don't know if, the, on the second sheet, it talks about a $5 per hour to $6 per hour increase for some of the employees. Did you all conduct a competitive wage study, and was this a result of this, or was this from something else?
So this was before our administration took over. So I apologize, I am not familiar with that. I do know that there was a restructuring before we took over and that there were increases because we were paying so poorly, especially in our youth center. And then when I came back in May, you actually gave us an increase of $2 to $4 over what had previously been requested, so we could get up to a competitive rate. And that was based upon the work that we did in conjunction with the county administration and the budget numbers that they had provided to make sure that we were, that we were similarly situated to other counties and that we were paying the appropriate amounts.
Okay. So it sounds like you have done a study for competitive wages, which I think is critically important to kind of, again, level-set where you need to be to, just to compete to get employees into Hamilton County. And so, I also heard you say that, there's one other thing in here. It talks about a 40-hour work week. Can you help us understand what was happening before there was a 40-hour work week?
So traditionally, the court has been a 35-hour work week. There were some employees who worked 40 hours, and there were some employees who were 35. When I came before you in May, we moved everyone in the court to a 40-hour work week, which did have an impact on the increase, increasing the budget, but we needed those additional hours to complete the work that we are obligated to do. And it also gave an increase to our employees without necessarily having to exponentially increase the hourly rate by having those five extra hours that frankly, most staff was working anyway. But we're just paying them for that work. So it was a hybrid for at least the last 25 years in our court. Most people were 35 hours a week, some being 40.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. And then one other thing. So last year, were there 29 new positions added last year?
Last year, not that I'm aware of. When we came before you in May, I requested 31 new positions, and we are filling those positions. I think we may have one or two left that are unfilled. Out of the 31 I requested, we've been able to find through other resources, funding for two of those positions, so we were to, able to take that off the table for the 31 positions I requested.
Yeah, no, that does, I'm sorry, that's what I'm referring to. So, so the 29 or so this year, and then you're asking for another 31 on top of that for next year?
32, which were on our organizational chart, but we did not realize when we took over administration that those positions were not funded. We believe that the positions on our organizational chart were all funded positions, and as we have come to learn over time, those positions became unfunded because the court had such a difficult time attracting and retaining staff, so it didn't make sense to continue asking for those as part of a budget that we weren't realistically going to be able to fill. But now that we have right-sized our pay, and we're able to create a more attractive work environment, we are having good success in attracting and retaining staff, and we're hopeful to fill those positions because most of them are going to be positions at our detention facility, which is the area that we struggle the most in attraction and retention of staff, and is also frankly, the most difficult work that I think anybody does in the court. And I will say it to anybody who asks me, I think that our juvenile corrections officer who work in our housing department have the hardest job in the entire court. What they are required to deal with on a daily basis is essentially, if you had to come into a job and for your eight-hour shift, you have to be on high-critical alert at every moment. That is the circumstance that those people work under because they can't take their eyes off of what is happening with those 12 kids in the room because very quickly, things can deteriorate.
Okay. So, thank you. So it's about 60 positions over the, this year and next year, which
Yes.
is a lot of positions.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so I just want to, I wanted to make sure I was getting those numbers correct. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that at full complement, things wouldn't be better. I am wondering, because we have heard that there are workforce challenges, even at a competitive wage, of getting folks in the door, and you know, as you know, we've got policies in place at the county to try to bring people in just with what we're doing, whether parental leave and tuition reimbursement and those kinds of things. So I do wonder, and you said you would hope to fill all of them next year. It's a similar conversation we had with the sheriff, where, you know, you're budgeting for the full complement in the hopes that you get there, knowing that you may or may not get there. I mean, that's optimal, but, but we just don't know. It's hard to predict what that might look like. So, okay, well, well, thank you. One other thing I want to note, so while expenses, the request is, from my math, $15 million over '22 to '24. The revenues are also up, so that's the good news. Now, that's, that's all relative, so that dollar amount is just a lot lower than what the request for expenses is. But what, what is, what is the revenue increase attributable to?
So that's how we draw down funds from our various other funding sources. We draw down federal dollars, we draw down state dollars, and there is a process in place that we have to go through for claiming those dollars. So the court is always claiming approximately a year behind in what we're entitled to do. And I believe I'm correct that we had an audit in last year's budget for our 2022 figures that held up our ability to present any claims for some of the dollars that we draw down for our 4E, for our 4E dollars.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. When you had employees that were 35 hours a week and you went to 40, how much did that increase your health benefit cost?
I apologize, that was not a question I was prepared to answer. I don't think it impacted our health cost because they were all full-time employees to begin with.
So you consider 35 hours full-time?
Yes.
Okay. That answers the question. Okay. So let me ask a couple of questions. We know how important juvenile court is, and so for those young people who have made a mistake, or some on purpose, but ended up there, that they are not a mistake, and you guys are there to, to encourage them and let them know, and hopefully, it's their last time coming there. I look at your expenses and revenue, and for revenue, you had 13% for grants, and I'm just wondering, is that an increase as far as how many grants you've received? Increase or decrease from what you normally receive as relates to grants each year? So is there some anticipation that you're going to work toward more grants if you don't get completely funded by us, correct?
Looking for grants, and actually, we have a meeting later this week to talk about an opportunity to apply for three more grants through the 300,000 dollars that we're hoping to draw down to divert some of these costs. So we're, we're always looking for grants.
So it's about 13% is normal for you guys?
It's typical.
Let's see. When I look at the positions, I also had some questions. Are these positions that you request indirect or indirect positions? I mean, like, the technology one is indirect. So are most of them direct positions that would be on the unit themselves? And how many are you talking about?
Yes, it's direct positions, and 26, I believe, was our count of the 31 would be positions for the youth center. Am I correct in that? Okay. Yes. So that's the majority of what we're looking to fill right now, and those are actual physical people in the building working directly with the children.
So how do you accommodate? 26 is a lot more that you need. So the ratio would then go from what to what?
So we have, unfortunately, we have people who, some of them work double shifts routinely for the court, which obviously adds to our overtime and the budget, which we would hope would be a natural decrease as we onboard new employees, but that's part of the push and pull. We are constantly trying to reorganize the staff who we have, who are able to show up healthy on any given day at that facility, to make sure that we have proper staffing to address the needs of the kids and on the unit. But unfortunately, sometimes what happens is if we don't have enough staff, what that translates to is kids have to spend more time in their room or in limited settings, which is something that we try to prohibit from happening. But when we don't have the staff to take them to recreation, when we don't have the staff to have the kids out on the floor or moving about the building, we have to go with the basics of what we can do for safety and security for the kids and for staff.
Thank you. So as you talk about Hillcrest, is that inclusive of using that, those staff for Hillcrest once it reopens, or you need additional positions?
So we, we are, we believe that it would be approximately 10 additional positions for Hillcrest that the court would need to onboard. The request for proposal, which I believe has been the draft, was shared with the commissioners. What we are looking at is a complete redesign of how we do things. You know, as a county and as a court, we don't place 144 children in a residential treatment center anymore. We know from the work from Council for State Government and other foundations that we do harm when we remove kids from their home. Sometimes it's unavoidable. So what we're looking to do at Hillcrest is a complete redesign. We are proposing a 24-bed residential treatment facility, which would be all for local county kids. We're looking at respite care beds, which would be helpful for jobs and family services, also to alleviate some of the stress of kids who are in our detention center that we can't get out because they keep coming back. So they commit more crimes in the community, which we can't allow to happen, but they're not kids that we really want to be detaining in our detention center. They're not violent, they're not aggressive, but they just keep going and doing things to get them in trouble with the law, or at least accused of doing things that get them in trouble with the law. And so, the redesign for Hillcrest would give an opportunity for us to have those kids in a staff-secured setting out at the Hillcrest campus and not have them in our detention center where they don't belong. We also end up in situations where victims of human trafficking end up stuck in our detention center for months and months and months. detention center for months and months and months as we try to locate places for them to go throughout the state because it's not safe for them to go home. When I was a magistrate, I had a young lady who was a victim of trafficking, and we allowed her to go home, and her trafficker literally came to her home and pulled her out of the house by the air. So it's very real dangers that they're facing, and we need to keep kids in a secure environment that keeps them safe, but they don't belong in jail. I mean, it's not their fault that they're victims. And so we're trying to redesign the system to make sure that we're addressing the needs for kids throughout the community. And another big piece of our Hillcrest proposal is we're looking for a 48-bed mental health facility that will do everything from short-term crisis intervention to long-term treatment. And we're hoping that our Children's Hospital or somebody else will come online and say that they would like to run that type of facility. I know in the past that the Children's Hospital has asked the court to consider opening up the fourth floor of our detention center as a possibility for some of the kids that they are serving through their system for mental health reasons. But Judge Bloom's position and Judge DeGraff and Reed's position is, we are not going to criminalize mental illness, and our detention center is not the appropriate place for these kids. But we do understand, they do need long-term treatment, and Hillcrest may be that solution.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm just thinking about what if, you know, the board agreed to 10 positions for Hillcrest, but only half of juvenile detention, how would that work? What are you anticipating as far as opening up Hillcrest in the next year?
So my understanding from the reports that I have read is that unfortunately, the last tenants left the facility in utter disarray, and it's going to take a full 10 months before it's habitable again. We are hopeful that as soon as it is habitable, that we are able to start putting kids back on that campus, because we do know the value of that resource and how important it is for the community.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I did have just a couple of things I wanted to, to highlight. One is, I think, hearing this obviously today and what's going on, Juvenile Court is evolving because the issues that youth are facing are a little bit different. And as you've indicated, the mental health piece and so many other issues when they come into the system, it's not just a one-issue type of situation. And then the fact that the recidivism, that's the one I'm very concerned about, because this is supposed to be rehabilitation. And then the youth violence that has just gotten way out of control. So I know there's a lot of things that Juvenile Court has to face that's maybe different than in the past. One of the things I wanted to, on the Hillcrest piece, and I know we'll have another conversation about that, but there were a lot of people who came in here who, you know, I can only assume they didn't do anything wrong, and they are employed, and they were, they filled this room up about their jobs. So I, I do have concern about that, about these folks that are, that work there, that was paying taxes and, you know, taking care of their families. And they're very concerned, not necessarily about just the company, you know, but the fact that they, you know, would not have jobs. And I think, I'd like to have that included in whatever report we get about Hillcrest, how many jobs were lost, you know, where did these people go that were, you know, paid because they were, I mean, they, we didn't have enough room, we had to have overflow of, of workers. So I just wanted to, to highlight that. I didn't want their, them coming down and that being fallen where we just ignored it. That's, that's something I think is important. The other thing I wanted to highlight, I know that our Budget Director, Mr. Brugan, asked each department to give kind of your maximum, your, if you had unlimited funds, because we wanted to know what's, you know, everything that's needed, what are the needs? And I know we can't finance all of those needs, as was said today. So I will be interested to know what is the baseline of how do we balance safety, want everybody to be safe, but then also, you know, what is that cutoff? You know, if we get to this number, you know, we're, we're in a dangerous zone of not being safe for the children, not being safe for the county and the residents. So I'm sure that number will come back to us. I did want to look at your non-personnel-
Yes.
-increase of 2.4 million. And you indicate, of course, some equipment needs. But on the food service, which has been very interesting, because you and the sheriff both talked about how, you know, we're not talking about steak dinners or anything like that, but that how the food was increasing, becoming more unsafe. But this number here, is this a increase for, I think, what are we serving, bologna sandwiches or some? I mean, what was this, where'd you get this number from? 315,000?
For the increase?
Yeah, is that an increase, or is that just a total contract?
It's the increase.
That is the increase. Is that with the same provider?
So what happened was, when we took over and realized what the kids were being served, first thing Judge Bloom did was said, "We have to get these kids more food." So I immediately went out and said, "We're getting more food now for these kids." Gave prosecutors a little bit of a heart attack because I kind of did it the wrong way, and then we had to go back out and rebid it, but we rebid it with the increased amount that we were asking for. So that is actually the new contract that we entered into this year.
Okay, so that's already in there. And then you have on here like 329,000 for other contracts. What type of, what would fall under other? It's page two of your, of your financial report on the budget. We need to hear you, I'm sorry.
Brian Wolf, Director of Finance.
Yes.
About 100, if I remember correctly, 120,000 was just simply me budgeting from the lease line item to a contract line item. That was for video camera service in our courtrooms. It's the last year of that contract, so we should actually have less cost in the other, in future years. The remaining of it are initiatives regarding juvenile justice that came out of the CSG review that we had, that includes some DEI consulting work, some restorative justice pieces where we're also going out to the community for hearing sessions, both internal and external hearing sessions. So it's a lot of smaller initiatives that may or may not be contracts at this time, but it was hard to fit those in other line item categories, not quite knowing. We know what the plans are, but vendors and trying to determine exactly what those are. So it's a lot of smaller items that add up to that.
Okay. I, the reason why I asked you when you said like DI training, because then you have another line item for training, and I didn't know if it fit under, or if it should go under the training.
So I think the DEI piece with that respect is around data collection and using data as it relates to, I believe, youth in the system, but also maybe employees and how we're treating them and making sure that everything's equitable.
Gotcha, okay. And then my last question is, while I have you standing, the interpreters, I know that has been an increase on both, at the, the sheriff mentioned it. Can you talk a little bit about that, and has that become an increased need for interpreters?
Yes, so there was a new initiative that came out of, I believe, best practices recommended by the Supreme Court, and that actually occurred last year, and we were under budget for that. The projections for what the increase would involve with those expanded services was just way under projection for what it actually cost. So we actually had to come back last year at the end of the year and get a supplemental appropriation to cover the difference. So that really should have been in last year's budget, and now we're making up for that, or I'm sorry, it should have been in this year's budget as well, and it was not. So we went ahead and added that for next year's budget to make sure that we are budgeted for the appropriate level of interpreter services that we are providing.
Gotcha, okay. And, oh, Mr. Brugan, I had a question. On the capital, we say capital outlay, is that, because I know you guys got a lot of needs over there at that building. I've been talking about it. Power washing, they said is out, can't happen. But on here, has, we, we kind of going up by 28,000 on capital outlay. Is that those capital requests, or is that a different budget we would be dealing with?
That's different. That specific item, the 28,000 is an item that didn't make it into the, the capital improvement plan. It is a, we are now having more security work up at the youth center, and there is a locker room there that needs some work done so that they can have appropriate facilities to get, to change into their uniform.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, because I'm for capital work over there. I just didn't know, I was like, this is a pretty small amount of money for capital outlay.
And certainly, major building work is in the county facilities budget. So mostly what you see in departmental budgets are equipment or smaller facility things.
Gotcha, okay. Well, thank you. Any more questions, Vice President Drehouse, Commissioner Dumas?
No, I, I do assume we're going to have more conversations related to Hillcrest, because I know that the, the RFP either has gone out or is going to go out. I think we're all concerned about, you know, the future use of that property and how to serve the population that was in that facility at the time. I think, you know, we're moving in the right direction. It's just a matter of how much time it's going to take us to get there and what that campus looks like once we finish that out. Because that's 80 acres, 80 acres of land out there, yes. So we've got some real opportunity out on that space to, as you say, re-envision what we're doing, how we're providing services, and, you know, what, what other opportunities might look like. So I did, so we, are we going to have future conversations related to Hillcrest? And if, and if it's not on the chart, could we put it on the chart so that we have some understanding, once you get a better sense of who has responded and what we're looking at, that we can also better understand what that's going to look like in the future?
And I'm sorry, did I interrupt? I just wanted to make sure, as lawyers, we always want the record to be straight, right? So President Reese, you had asked about the, the staff at, that had been employed by the Company Rights of Passage and their placement at the Hillcrest property. And I'll say that when we had the Judge DeGraff and Reed and me and Administrator Igo, as well as many other staff members, we had the open conversation with the community out at Xavier and invited conversation about what to do next. And at that moment, and at that time, we heard some of the same conversation, and we made the offer, "Send us your resume, send the court your resume." We, those employees, I think the statement was, we would give them priority in the interviewing process. We also feel their pain and did not want them to be put out at all, right? They are the people who were in charge of taking care of our children. And again, we can't say that they didn't all do something wrong, but we know most of them are also in a worse position because of something someone else did. And so that, we still stand by that. We don't want anyone in the community who is vital to the, to the success of our kids and families to be lingering without employment, especially as we're looking for more and more people to come in and help us. So I, I appreciate that you brought that up, and I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that that is our, our offer. We want to hear from you, we want you to come in and speak with us if you can. And as I sat over there and heard about all the money that we're asking for, and it is a lot, and I understand that, one thing I just want to let you know is that the staff who is all here, most of the people over here, are from the court, which feels very good and is heartwarming, but they have worked since January until today to sort of understand what's going on at the court, where our budgets have come from before, untangle what was all done by, you know, people who did the budgets before, because none of us, even people who were tenured for a long time, were included in any of those conversations. And so to come and to ask for what we believe is true and right to treat children is coming just from that place and not from any place of making sure that we can sustain any sort of, you know, positions or, or our position in the county. It truly is to treat children and families. And so I'll, I'll leave you with that, but I did just want to make sure we are clear, as to your point, because that is an important thing.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, Juvenile Court, for your presentation. We really appreciate it, and thanks for answering our questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the presentation from our auditors. Welcome, Madam Auditor.
Thank you, good afternoon. President Reese, Commissioner Dumas, Commissioner Drehouse, and members of the administration, thank you for the opportunity to join you today to speak about the budget request from the Hamilton County Auditor's Office. I'm Bridget Kelly, and since March, I've had the privilege of serving as county auditor alongside a talented, knowledgeable, and experienced team. Our Chief Deputy Auditor, Amy Humphrey, Finance Director, Greg Jarvis, Assistant Finance Director, Deb Garvey, and Budget and Settlement Supervisor, Beth Weber, are joining me here today, and I really want to thank them for all of their work all the time, but also for their help in organizing our presentation today. This afternoon, I'd like to share a little bit more about what we do, provide some historical perspective about our office, and talk more about our proposed budget and priorities. And of course, I welcome the opportunity to answer your questions. At the center of our work is service to members of our community. We want to provide taxpayers with the information and resources they need and always give a high level of customer service. We want to be transparent in our work and modernize our office to ensure efficiency and accuracy. The Auditor's Office touches every department, taxing district, school district, municipality, and township across our county. Now, many people may know that we are the Chief Financial Officer for the county, the Chief Real Property Assessor, if they didn't know that before, they know it now, and Chief Payroll Officer. In addition to that, the Auditor is part of the Board of Revision and County Budget Commission. Our office administers state programs like the CAUV, the Agricultural Land Use Program, vendor and cigarette licensing, rental registration, the homestead exemption, and owner occupancy credit. We are in charge of dog licensing. Our weights and measures team ensures your pound is a pound and your gallon is a gallon. And all of this is in addition to other duties as assigned by law. So you can see more about all of the departments and the work that we do on our website at hamiltoncountyauditor.org. Right now, we have about 18 members of our team who work in fiscal officer, payroll officer, weights and measures, and administrative duties. These members of our team are primarily paid through the general fund. We have about 47 members of our team who work on assessor duties, and they are paid through the real estate assessment fund. As for dog and kennel, we have less than one full-time employee, and she is paid through the dog and kennel fund. Finally, we have about 14 people working in IT, including technical support for the Auditor's Office and payroll and finance systems for the county. Historically, the Auditor's Office has had a very lean budget. And as you can see from this chart, our general fund request for 2024 is less than it was in 1999, and that's not even adjusting for inflation. We did more with less, including our staff going for about five years without pay increases. So as you can see, our all-funds budget is just over $16 million, with the majority of it coming from the real estate assessment fund. We're requesting an increase of about $300,000 in our general fund budget for 2024, for a total of about $2.6 million. That's still less than 1% of the county's overall general fund budget, in case any of you were counting. On the revenue side of things, for the general fund receipts collected by our office, we've estimated an overall increase of almost 6.5% or $15.2 million compared to the original 2023 estimate. The largest anticipated increase is in real estate-related collections, $9.9 million over 2023's original estimate, based on tentative property values at this time. And again, I want to remind you, that's based on tentative property values, we're still waiting on the final values from the state at the end of the year. However, if House Bill 187 passes, it will result in revised property values and would likely decrease the estimated general fund revenues. To say nothing of the added workload it will give our entire office, most especially our real estate and IT staffs. Next, the real estate assessment fund is meant to help county auditors with the responsibility of discharging our duties as the Chief Real Property Assessor. We've requested an increase in this fund, which is entirely separate from the general fund. Then, we're asking for a small increase to our IT budget. In addition to working with our office, this part of our team works with a number of other county departments. Finally, we're asking for a very small increase in our dog and kennel fund, and the total budget for that department is less than $100,000, even in a county our size. Having a strong team is especially important because the Auditor's Office is responsible for a wide variety of duties. With these responsibilities, we need experienced- With these responsibilities, we need experienced, competent staff to execute the statutory duties affecting citizens of Hamilton County. All of those different responsibilities that I laid out in the beginning of this presentation, we do all of that with a team of 77 people. To provide some historical context, in 1991, the Hamilton County Auditor's Office had 176 employees. To provide some present-day comparison, our team is about half the size of Franklin County and more than 20% smaller than the staff in Montgomery County. We've provided our employees with pay increases over the last six months. In doing so, we considered the wage study from the county, the need to create greater equity across job classifications in our office, and the need to recognize seniority on our staff. As I mentioned before, it is imperative for us to retain highly trained and qualified staff and to be able to build our team so that we can best serve the taxpayers of our county. The work in the Auditor's Office is extremely complicated and extremely nuanced, and we are very, very fortunate to have an experienced team who knows all of the nooks and crannies of this kind of work. We must grow to meet the demands of modernizing our office and better serve our constituents. This includes attracting and retaining staff, and of course, as you know, we're competing against other government offices and against the private sector, and needing more staff to execute hugely important projects like updating our website and securing a new financial accounting system, which will certainly have a huge impact across the county. We want to add another accounts payable clerk to increase the speed of our payments. So the number of payments through accounts payable has increased from about $95,000 per year in 2020 to nearly $130,000 in 2022. This position is something that we had in 2020 but never replaced. The need exists and continues to grow, because if we can be more timely on those payments, that's a good thing for everyone in the entire county. Our statute dictates very specifically what and how REA funds may be used. They have to be used on funds related to reappraisal. This is also an area where we're looking to grow our team and our services. For example, we anticipate a very busy year in the Board of Revision, so we are looking to add to that part of our team to better serve residents who want to file with the board. We want to include our mapping capabilities and other online options. In this request, there are also some increases that are really outside of our control. For example, the cost of benefits is increasing, and the cost of our pay core contract is going up. The one new item in our request is a line item to assist us with a branding update. We want folks in our county to be able to easily discern an official communication from us, from an unauthorized by us solicitation using our data or photos, for example. We want to increase our staffing and IT so that, like from many other departments you've heard from, we continue to improve our presence and services related to technology, including all of the information that we have easier to access and utilize. You can see here again that we have some expenses which are beyond our control but are still included in our budget. We want to improve our operations and communication to best serve taxpayers throughout the county. We'd love to revisit the cost of chargebacks to ensure that we're able to appropriately cover the work that we're doing for other county departments. In the upcoming year, we will also be working to replace our financial accounting system. And while there is a special project fund for this, we anticipate that this will be a big demand on our team's time and talent and a transition that needs to happen with virtually no room for error. President Reese, Commissioner Dumas, Commissioner Drehouse, our office impacts everyone in the county, and our internal needs really do serve the whole county. And while I don't envy the tough choices you'll have to make, I'd respectfully remind you that the Auditor's Office has historically operated very frugally and very responsibly, but we have to have adequate staff and resources in order to best serve the taxpayers of our county. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present our budget request for you today, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Auditor Kelly, for the presentation. Very informative. I'm going to ask you to dig in a little bit on the legislation that you referred to. Is it House Bill 187?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell us what the impact of that would be and whether or not you think it has legs?
Yes. Commissioner, President Reese, Commissioners, House Bill 187 is a bill that has passed the House of Representatives and is pending in the Senate alongside a companion bill. Presently, when we do our reappraisal, the Department of Taxation has the ability to wait the three years in between. So every six years, we do a full reappraisal. Every three years, we do a statistical update. So when we do our full reappraisal of all 350,000 parcels of property in Hamilton County, we submit our tentative values to the Department of Taxation, who can decide whether they want to take a three-year average or wait one or more of those years differently. House Bill 187 would require a three-year average. So as you can imagine, especially in a place like Hamilton County with so many parcels of property, this is a very long-term project and something that, you know, our team in the Auditor's Office has been working on for well over a year since I was even in this office. House Bill 187 would require a three-year average. So essentially, we would have to redo all of that work that has been approved for tentative values with tax and in compliance with them, but essentially, we'd have to redo all of that work for this coming year. I've heard that they may make a fix to it so that tax bills can go out on time, because if we were to, if this bill was to pass and we were trying to get tax bills out in January, it would be all but impossible. It's October 18th, and this is something that we've been working on for a really long time. And while we are certainly empathetic to people that have issues with property tax obligations, the state of Ohio has other options, for example, direct help. They could expand the homestead exemption. I think that there are other solutions aside from this that will create a much more challenging circumstance. So I hope it doesn't have legs.
Well, gee, and well, that it passed out of the House, I guess, is a little concerning right off the bat.
I have heard that it is, sorry, President Reese, Commissioners, I've heard that the Senate is going to take some type of action. The Auditors Association throughout the state has been engaging with the legislators, and I'm really hoping that they are mindful, one, of the impact that this would have on school districts, taxing districts, other, you know, important things in our communities, that, you know, folks have said that are important to them. But also on the team in the Auditor's Office, you know, we have 77 people, and we also are working with an outside firm approved by the state of Ohio on our reappraisal project. But the next cycle starts in 2024, and so we don't have the staff and the resources to be able to do such a Herculean task in a timely manner. So I think if the legislator is serious about wanting to provide property tax relief to folks in the state of Ohio, they certainly have other options besides House Bill 187.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion on that and the update. So and with the reappraisals that just went out, do you expect that the Board of Revision then is going to be busier next year than it has been in the past couple of years?
Yes, President Reese, Commissioners, we do anticipate that the Board of Revision will be busy. In previous years, the Auditor's Office has had informal reviews, so people could come in with their tentative values and talk a little bit more about those. But because the Department of Taxation was late this year in approving our tentative values, we did not have the time or the staff available to be able to do this. So right now, folks, if they think we missed the mark on their value when they get their tentative, when they get their final values in December, so final values in December, they can, if they think we missed the mark, they can file a complaint with the Board of Revision between January 1st and March 31st. Those dates are important because they are set out in statute. There's instructions on our website at hamiltoncountyauditor.org that include information about evidence that they can bring in, more about the process. So yes, we think, one, with the values going up in a way that we haven't seen before, but also because with the delay from the state, we didn't have the opportunity to do those informal reviews, that we will have a pretty busy Board of Revision season.
The information that you just gave for people to contest is on the information that you send out?
Correct. So it's on their tentative value letters that were sent out. It's also on our website at hamiltoncountyauditor.org.
Okay, thanks. And one last thing, you mentioned marketing, and we have embarked, or rather, are in the middle of a rebranding marketing effort at the county. So I just want to offer that. I don't know if you have talked to Bridget Doherty, who is doing that for the county, but there might be a nexus there for you to save some time and money and pile on with what we're doing. So I just want to offer that as a possibility.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Reese and Commissioners. And we're def, I know our Chief Deputy, Amy Humphrey, has spoken with Bridget Doherty. Our branding request is for about $30,000, so less than, I think, some other departments that have come in front of you, but always open to collaborating where possible and where it makes sense.
Thank you. I wanted to piggyback on the assessment, just so people I know that are watching. And I think the tie-in, for me at least, is as I'm looking at the total budget and looking at how this affects people at home on their personal budgets and the fact that this reevaluation, I want to be clear that we have the auditor here, number one, that this is mandated by the state of Ohio, not the county commissioners, not the county auditor, not the county treasurer, because a lot of people don't know where it's coming from. They hear DC Hamilton County, and they say, you sent me this letter. And then we have people out putting out false narratives that the county commissioners and auditor is doing this. This is by the statute of the state of Ohio, AKA the law. And your state representatives, your state senators, and your governors, those are the folks that can control this particular thing. And the law says currently, I think, six years, and we just happened to fall on the sixth. With that, though, being said, we do have a responsibility as we look at the budget. And anytime we can give the homeowners a break, we got to give it to them. This evaluation piece, there was an article just today, and it's, and everybody's mad about, you know, this letter. Madam Auditor, you said they went out late because of the state, because you usually have to pay in January, and we still don't have the real numbers. Is that what's going on? Or can you clarify that for us?
Thank you, President Reese, Commissioners. So starting sort of from where you are, the reappraisal, the full reappraisal that we're doing, we actually have to physically view each of the over 350,000 parcels of property in Hamilton County. That is mandated by the state, that we have to do that every six years. After we do that, we have to turn in what's called tentative values to the state for them to approve, to say, yes, we think you're on the right path. We think you considered the right sales, et cetera. And they either approve or don't approve those. So after they were approved, that's when we sent out the tentative value letters to citizens in Hamilton County. And that's actually not something that is required of us, but rather something that we do as a courtesy and a service to the taxpayers so that, one, they know we're in the middle of the reappraisal process; two, so that they can double-check their information; and, three, in the interest of being transparent and accurate in the work that we are doing. So following that, the state will give us our final values in December. And so that's really what's used, so after we know the disposition of the levies in November, we get our final values in December, and the state calculates the effective tax rate. That's when people will really have a better sense of their property tax obligation. Now, just because your value goes up by a certain percentage doesn't necessarily mean your tax obligation will go up by that same percentage. So for example, if your property value went up 10%, it doesn't necessarily mean your taxes will go up 10%. They could stay relatively the same, they could go up. But, you know, when we were in the recession, property values were going down and taxes were going up. And so I think your question relates well to what Commissioner Drehouse was asking in terms of what the state is doing in order to try to help folks in our county. So, one, we know that public schools are over-reliant on property taxes, which has been ruled unconstitutional for 30 years. So that's really the crux of the problem. So until the legislature does something meaningful about that, you know, we have that problem. We have House Bill 187, which is supposed to help in terms of the property tax obligation for folks, but creates a lot of issues for auditors in terms of redoing all the work that we've done. We would likely have to pay more to get more help in order to, you know, recalculate all of these values instead of doing something, for example, like direct payments or refundable tax credit or something like that.
Yeah, I was just reading this today, and it's happening with everyone, no matter, you know, what your race is, but particularly in black neighborhoods at a time when those neighborhoods, people are being genderfied. And they had a, in here, and you're excellently quoted in here, but in here, Karen Marshall, they said, a longtime Evanston resident, and I've been talking about Evanston because these houses have jumped out of the roof, said the value of her primary residence, which was on Hudson, it is on Hudson Avenue, shot up from 174, shot up to 174% from $53,000 to now $134,500 in the latest Hamilton County property assessment. And then they go on to say that they're projected to spike 154% from $1,260 she was paying in property taxes to now $3,196.50 for the same period that the county property tax estimator is saying. And, you know, this is the stuff, even if it may not go up exactly the amount, this is the highest of these property reevaluations, not to your fault or anything, but at the end of the day, is going up, and we got people struggling. So the reason why I was saying that, from the budget, not necessarily your particular budget, but when we, for me, when I look at this whole budget, I got to look at, well, how do I get a break for the people that's paying the taxes? You know, we got to give them some kind of break. But this is, this stuff is real. And she says, in quotes, "This is horrible," is what she told the Enquirer in disbelief. And she said, "I don't know how I'll be able to hang on," especially those who are in their 70s and 80 years of age. Unfortunately, the homestead used to be automatic. When you turn 70, your property tax froze when Strickland was the governor, and that changed now. It's not automatic. So this is what, and then, you know, one of our policies is affordable housing, not new affordable. We got to help people stay in the house they got. So I put all that in context when I'm looking at the total budget, and I wanted to, for you to be able to articulate and explain that this is not something mandated by the auditor, Hamilton County auditor, but something that you have to do as your job. But as we look at budgets, we, you know, for me, I'm looking at, what can I do? Because these people are getting these big bills, these letters, and they're tabulating up. There'll be some increase. Now, what the increase is, we don't know, but there'll be some increase. So I appreciate you giving information. My last, my next question.
Can I add something to that, Commissioner, President Reese, if I may? So one of the things with the property tax calculator, and I think there's actually a note on the Enquirer's website now. We put the property tax calculator on our website, again, as a service to the people of Hamilton County so they can get an estimate of what their taxes are. It is right now at its least accurate, because everyone's value is changing. We don't know the disposition of levies, and we don't yet know the effective tax rates that the state of Ohio is going to pass down to us. So with everyone's value changing, and with all of those effective rates changing, the property tax calculator takes a snapshot of tax year 2022, paid 2023. And so I really just want to remind people that that is not necessarily the best way to determine a property tax obligation. The second piece of that is a frustrating one and something that our office has been dealing with that, because when folks contact us and say, hey, I got my tentative value letter, and I'll tell you, nobody's happy if their value goes up. Nobody's happy if their value goes down. And again, this is something mandated by the state, not by the county commission, that they want to know what's going to happen to my property taxes. And the bad news is, is that we can't give them a simple formula, and we can't give them any kind of estimate until we know the final values, the effective rates, and the disposition of those levies in November. So again, it won't be until the end of the year, and those final values will be on our website in December.
Gotcha. I'm reading this article from Randy Tucker. But I doubt if your, I doubt if your taxes go down. And, you know, that's kind of a concern. If you're selling, obviously, you want your value to go up, you sell it. But if you're not selling and you're trying to stay, so I wanted to bring that up. On the, the system of how you can challenge, is that requiring a lawyer? What is that? Some people have asked about that. Do I got to go get a lawyer to come down there? I don't, you know, I'm 70 and 80 years old. I don't really know. What's that process? Can you let them know?
Thank you, President Reese and Commissioners. That process is the Board of Revision process. And so folks can make a challenge on their parcel of property once every three years. You don't necessarily have to hire a lawyer. In fact, if you go to our website at hamiltoncountyauditor.org, folks can see the kinds of evidence that they can bring in with us, whether it's a fee appraisal. Because one of the big things about the way that we're doing the full the full reappraisal is we do it by a mass appraisal process, which is different than if you want to get a loan to buy a house. And somebody's in looking in your closets and every nook and cranny. You might want to get a fee appraisal for the Board of Revision. You could bring in comparable sales. You could bring in a signed estimate from a contractor. All of these saying substantiating, you know, we think you got my value wrong. Then all that evidence will be considered by a panel of three people. Um, which are the auditor, treasurer and president of the Hamilton County Commission, or our designees. And so they will consider the evidence that people bring in to say, we got it right, we got it wrong, or there needs to be an adjustment.
Gotcha.
And again, and people can file between January first and March thirty-first. And those dates are set out in statute. So there won't be, you know, extensions or anything like that. And I think that's really important for folks to know.
Well, you need any additional staff? I mean, you said it's going to be way more people than ever. Is that in this budget you gave us?
Uh, it is, but it's not in, oh, sorry, President Reese, Commissioners, that is in our budget. But it is, uh, it would be something that we could cover through REA since it's related to our duties as a real property assessor. So that would not come out of the general fund.
Okay. I didn't know if you needed something from us. Okay, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. Um, I noticed an increase in the dog and kennel fund. And I remember you saying you have less than one person. So is there some thought to increase that person or just keep that less than one, uh, as you look at your increase in that fund?
Yeah, uh, thank you for the question, President Reese, Commissioner Dumas. So that is something that we have considered. We really want to take a, a more holistic look at what we're doing with dog and kennel, because some counties do things a little bit differently. And we think those options might help us to do things a little bit more efficiently. Our contract, I believe, for our vendor is up next year. Um, and so we're under contract, um, with our vendor this year. Um, but really want to take a look at maybe revising that program a little more holistically, uh, next year when we have the opportunity to rebid it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I looked at the, uh, capital outlay and proposed, uh, proposed increase there. And that's IT services and additional personnel or not additional personnel?
Uh, thank you for the question, President Reese, Commissioner Dumas. Frankly, we could grow our staff, uh, by more than the positions that we're asking for in this budget and still have plenty of work for everyone to do. We are a lean experience team. And so some of the things that we have to plan for are, as much as I hate to say this word, retirements, uh, folks leaving. And so we really want to make sure that we are strengthening our staff to try to retain as much knowledge in these specialized fields as possible. And again, especially related to IT, as you've heard from other departments, you know. We want to continue to increase our offerings for the citizens of the county. So that they can find the information that they're looking for, they can do it in an easy way and in a way that is intuitive. And so we will need a few more staff for that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And lastly, uh, the Board of Revision, um, when I first came, there was some thought that maybe, uh, they had not received uh, raises in quite a while, a while, whether or not you were considering that. And as we talk about the backlog possibly, of course, for the reappraisals. Um, was there some thought of maybe increasing their hourly rate? Uh, the young lady who has since passed, uh, brought that to me. And, uh, the reason too is because a lot of those representatives, of course, are real estate people. And so they have to judge whether or not they want to go out and do the real estate or come and, uh, be a part of the Board of Revision. Which they, they do do that. But just wondering if you had considered a little bit of an increase for those that are on the Board of Revision, because it has been a while.
Uh, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Dumas, that's something we'd be happy to further discuss.
Oh, that was a good political answer. Okay.
Well, because the, sorry, pardon me, President Reese, Commissioner Dumas. The structure of the Board of Revision is just a little bit different since it has appointees from different, uh, branches of our county government. So we just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is one, in keeping with the law, but also sort of keeping up with everything else. It's not something that we've had extensive discussions with yet, but is, about yet, but is something we'd be happy to, to talk about.
And I appreciate that certainly. And as we're, we're looking at adjustments in all our departments. And as we look at adjustments, I think that's a, an area that I think we could also look at. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I, I think we should, uh, look at that. And then, um, I also want to see, I don't know of legal aid. A lot of the paperwork that will be required for a homeowner to bring down to a Board of Revision. Anything that we can help in that process? I don't know if legal aid has a, but you know, we have a lot of programs that we say you can go to get some free legal advice. Um, I don't know if legal aid is the right place. I'm just throwing it out there. But I do think we need to have something available for the, uh, homeowner who may never have, you know, had to come. Because if you're talking about, they got to bring an appraise they self, they got to pay for that. Uh, if they talk about a contractor, there's a fee for that. So I don't want, um, it's costing me a thousand dollars. And at the end, I might lose and still have to pay three thousand. Now I'm out of four thousand dollars. So wanted to just work with, uh, your, uh, office if possible. And just see if there is anything out there as we're looking at the budget. Is there anything out there? We've got a little bit of ARPA money left over. Is it anything out there that can help with this, uh, revision process? From the people that are serving on the revision as well as the people, you know, grandma will come down here. She don't know, you know, she's just trying to come down to save her house. Is there anything that we could offer that would help her get the right paperwork?
President Reese, Commissioners, I know, at least in the auditor's office, we're not permitted, uh, to provide any kind of legal advice. I know legal aid has done some of this in the past. And there may be some other partner organizations. So I'm happy to get back to you with that.
Okay, that sounds great. Well, thank you very much. Uh, you came in with a nice small budget. We thank you.
Thank you. I would encourage you to keep our nice small budget very whole.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Okay, next. Very important, also important department, the Hamilton County Board of Elections. Can't believe y'all had time to squeeze us in. We got an election going on right now. Someone's got it going while you guys are here. Thank you.
Underway. Good afternoon, President Reese, Vice President Drehouse, Commissioner Sommers Dumas. This is Sheri, I'm Sheri Poland, and I'm the Director of the Hamilton County Board of Elections. And I'm here with Alex Linsor, our Deputy Director. We thank you for the opportunity to present our 2024 proposed budget. As you all are aware, 2024 is a presidential election year. It is the busiest election year, uh, that we experience. Get our presentation started here. It turned up. There we go. So the average voter turnout in a presidential year in Hamilton County is seventy-three percent. To put that into perspective, the average turnout in a midterm election is fifty-one percent. The average turnout in an odd year general, which we're experiencing now, is a thirty-two percent increase. So it makes sense that we are requesting an increase in our budget in 2024 in comparison to our current year's budget. This is simply so that we can comply with the demand of our voters. So that we can fully staff and resource our increasingly popular early vote center. So that we may be able to timely mail absentee ballots. And so that we can go out into the community on Election Day and open up our neighborhood polling places. That being said, this 2024 proposed budget is in line with similar presidential election budgets with two exceptions. The first, there is a one point six million dollar increase in non-personal line item to pay for the license support and maintenance of our current vote counting system. That is a one-time payment that will cover us for five years. By way of background, we implemented the current vote counting system we have in 2019. When we implemented, uh, that funding was primarily provided by the state. So we are under a state contract for that system. That state contract calls for the license and maintenance fees for years six through ten to be made in one lump sum payment at the beginning of year six. The beginning of year six is 2024. So that would cover our license, support and maintenance contract from 2024 through 2028. There is one additional exception to the normal presidential election budget. And I'm going to turn it over to Deputy, um, Deputy Director Alex Linsor to explain that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, and I just want to add before we move on from this slide that the increase in personnel that you see does not reflect any change in our positions or our table of organization, does not reflect any change in salaries. That is an increase in overtime and an increase in temporary employees that we need to cover the extra demands of a presidential election. The one thing that we are asking for that is going to be different from previous years is we would like to increase the amount of money that we pay poll workers. Poll workers who serve the voters provide, uh, incredible service to the voters of Hamilton County. Uh, it's a very long day. Uh, they're, they're at the polling places at five thirty. They're usually not done by eight or even later for some of the positions. We do require them to go through in-person training most elections. And there's some extra work they have to do in terms of transporting ballots to and from the polling location. Uh, we, we, we cannot put on a successful election without poll workers. Uh, and the chart that you see in front of you shows that we're beginning to lag behind the other major metropolitan counties when it comes to poll worker compensation. Last time poll workers received an increase was two thousand and sixteen. So it's been eight years since they've seen any kind of increase. And, you know, poll worker recruitment is always a challenge. But we are starting to see the amount of money become a problem when it comes to recruiting poll workers. Right now, um, your, your standard poll worker makes a hundred and eighty-one fifty. Again, that is for a fifteen-hour day plus a four-hour training class. If you do that math, they're coming in just over seven dollars an hour, uh, which is not great. So we wanted to get closer to what they're offering in Franklin County and Cuyahoga County. You see, uh, Franklin County is at two seventy-eight, or sorry, yeah, and, and Cuyahoga County is at two fifty. Uh, we didn't want to move all the way up there because that would be too much of a shock to the budget for us to, um, to get all the way up there where Franklin County is. But we want to get our, our sort of standard poll worker pay up to two twenty-five. And then for the voting location deputy, which is sort of the assistant manager of the polling location, they would make two hundred and forty-five dollars. And the voting location managers would make two hundred and seventy-five. And those managers and deputies have the additional responsibilities of having to transport ballots. And they're also the ones who bring the voting equipment back to the Board of Elections on election night. And that concludes our presentation. We thought we would be short and buck the trend. Uh, but of course, we're happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I had a question about the state contractor of the system that, our voting system as it is. So with that, did all the counties use that particular system?
No. So the way that it works is the Secretary of State, along with our Board of Voting Machine Examiners, certifies the systems that local boards can then choose from. So there are, uh, different systems, different vendors that are used amongst the eighty-eight counties. But we all have to choose from a list that's certified by the state.
But the county, but the, uh, but the terms of the contract are the same with whatever vendor?
Yes, that's correct.
I just have one question, because I know a while ago, this, I don't know, I think it was this vendor. They put in the wrong date and we had a situation. So I'm just trying to figure out, when we have those kind of things, I know in the private sector, there's some money returned. How do we account that, that, you know, not just, oh, my God, I'm sorry, you know, sorry he's not getting it? Is there any type of penalty or something? I know, uh, you guys are not happy about it, but was there something that we got back from that?
Uh, so that was a different vendor. That was a vendor, yeah, for our, our electronic poll book. So those are the iPads, tablets that our poll workers use to check in voters on Election Day. Um, that occurred back in twenty fifteen. Um, this is actually our vote counting system. So this is the system that, um, it's basically made up of the scanners that go out into the polling places. It's the, um, ballot marking devices that are used by voters with disabilities so they can mark their ballots independently. It's the computers and the software in our vote counting room that designs the ballots, tabulates the votes. Um, and so with us, this particular vendor, vendor's heart in our civic. We actually have been with them since two thousand and six and have been sat, very satisfied um, with the customer support, with their equipment. You know, we've had extremely successful elections with this vendor.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't that same company. The other question is, you had the other county comparisons. What about Montgomery County? I'm for poll workers getting more, but I just wonder, where do we align with, with them? I know Franklin County is bigger and has a boatload of money.
We sort of feel like we're sort of in Hamilton County on an island of our own a little bit, right? Um, when we look at the number of registered voters, Cuyahoga and Franklin fall short, just a little under nine hundred thousand. We hover right around the six hundred thousand mark. Montgomery and Summit are both real close to around three hundred thousand. So I'm not sure if our fiscal officer included that in the study or we, we did not. But we can, we can get you that information.
I was just curious in that, because if they're paying more, that is definitely a real problem. Um, and then my last question is not on this part, but I, because I was not here. But I would like to know, what is our rental agreement with where we are? How much are we paying in rent? How long is that term? I just would like to have that information.
Yes, and that's definitely something we can, um, supply to you. We moved in in twenty seventeen. It was for a ten-year agreement, uh, with one, uh, five-year renewal, uh, period. I, I believe that's the maximum that we can, um, lease a facility for is fifteen years under one contract.
Okay, yeah, I just, so you can get that to me. I appreciate it. I know we added with the, um, early vote center, which I think it's been really good.
Correct, correct. And it's been absolutely wonderful. We, we appreciate the funding for that because voters, uh, definitely take advantage of that early vote center.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Um, so I too support the increase for poll workers. I know how hard it is to get a poll workers. And having done that myself, I also know what a long day that is. Uh, so I, I can understand why you need to do that to continue to try to recruit good people to do the, the function of poll working, because, you know, without them, we don't have an election. Um, but as you think into the future and you look at trends related to, um, early voting, to, um, mail-in voting. What, what are you, say, within the next five or ten years? Have you thought through what changes might occur for elections? What strategies you are thinking about related to any changes? Because voting patterns have changed and, um, and it is hard to recruit folks to do these jobs. So this is one strategy and I applaud that. Um, just wondering what else you're thinking about?
Sure. Um, actually something that we are looking at doing in 2025 after the presidential is looking to see where are there single precinct polling locations that we may be able to combine um, and into and make multiple precinct polling locations. It's, it's not something, a step that we want to take before presidential year. We know voters do not like when we change their polling locations. And we only do that when absolutely necessary. But given the fact that more and more voters are choosing to vote at the early vote center and, and by mail. Um, we thought it would be a good time after the 2024 presidential election. You know, to take a look at the trend over the past four years and to look to see if we can solve, can consolidate some of those polling locations, which would mean less poll workers. So that is something we're considering.
Okay, yeah, you, um, and to your credit, you've made it so easy to vote early. Uh, that I think, um, and having done that, I didn't used to ever vote early. I always, always, always voted on Election Day, uh, because that's, was the tradition and that's what we did. Um, but I have a mom, my mom is eighty-eight years old. It's just a lot easier for her to go and vote early. Uh, and it's so convenient. You have done a fantastic job with the new facility. Um, and so i- it's just something that I think through. So can you, and, and I know the trend is that you're seeing more early voting. How steep is that incline?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's a little, it's a little bit all over the place. It sort of held steady for years before 2020 at seventy percent voting on Election Day. And then, uh, about twenty-three percent voting by mail and seven percent, um, voting early in person. And then we had 2020 and it actually flipped for the first time. And more voters cast their ballot prior to Election Day than on Election Day. But then it flipped back again in twenty-one. And we're again seeing more voters vote on Election Day. But the by mail and early voting is still rising. So I think we're sort of in this, um, transition period where I think voters, because of COVID in 2020, um, voted by mail for the very first time or voted at the early vote center for the very first time and saw the convenience. But I think we need a little bit, uh, more elections under our belt and to get a little bit more data before we start making permanent changes based on that.
Yeah, I think people are just becoming more. Yeah, I think people are just becoming more comfortable with voting outside of Election Day. So, all right. Well, thank you for what you do, both of you. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple comments. When you were saying about the increase for poll workers, I certainly agree with that. They do some very important work. I heard you say about looking ahead, about possibly combining polling centers. I don't know if I'd be a fan of that. It would be less poll workers, but it may reduce some of the voters because neighborhood polling places are always nice, especially for older adults. They just like going where they're accustomed to going, but that's something you can look at later. Transportation is somewhat better, but I don't think I would be an advocate for it, but we'll see later on. But I just wanted, and you answered my question as it relates to the increase of monies, because I wanted to compare the voters, and you said ours is about 600,000, and the other two counties are about 900,000. So, even with that being said, I would say, well, that's why they make more, but it still doesn't compare to what we need to do with our workers. So, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I also want to say, I want to thank you for your partnership with our public health and getting, making that a location where people can come and get the vaccine. There were lots of people that came through there. They were comfortable because they had voted there. They knew the location. I really think that made us very unique, and I think it also shows Board of Elections being a partner of the community, not just when it's time to vote. So, I just wanted to highlight that, and I certainly think that's another national model that we've done here in Hamilton County that I don't think anywhere else has done that. So, just wanted to thank you and highlight that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Go back and run that election. We've got an election going on right now. No, thank you both. All right, next is Jobs and Family Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, President Reese, Vice President Dreyhouse, Commissioner Dumas. Thank you for having me this afternoon, and I will wait for Commissioner Dumas to come back. She asked me to give her a second, so we just hold off just for a second, but I'll be ready to go.
I don't know. We got to...
President Reese, defer to you.
I mean, he can give you introduction.
Okay, sure, sure. So, for those watching at home, my name is Michael Patton. I'm Director of Job and Family Services. I am joined today by John Nelson, who is our Assistant Director of Finance and Supportive Services, and also our newly hired Comptroller, Jen Ketter, who is familiar with the county as well. So, glad to have her on board for my presentation.
Yeah, go ahead. I think she went to the...
Sure. So, I just wanted to start off by saying this is a little bit misleading. It does say 2024 JFS budget request. I've mentioned this last year, and I think it probably comes up before in these presentations related to the budget of Job and Family Services, but where our funding is coming directly from state and federal allocation, so I'll get into that just a little bit. And so, who are we as an organization? Our major duties include children's services, responsibility for keeping children safe and protected from abuse and neglect. We also are responsible for our child support program, which is responsible for establishing paternity, establishing support orders, modifying support orders, collecting current child support, and also collecting passed-to child support. We also are responsible for workforce development, which is the responsibility of connecting job seekers with employment. It also includes working with youth year-round through our Office of Youth. We are responsible for adult protective services, ensuring that adults and the elderly are free from mistreatment, abuse, and exploitation. And then finally, last but not, obviously not least, is our Division of Economic Sustainability, which is responsible for the administration of cash, assistance, SNAP, Medicaid, childcare, and other support programs like prevention, retention, and contingency. We are divided into five functional divisions. So, the prior slide talked about what we do and who we are in terms of our responsibilities. Our organization is divided into five functional divisions. Office of Director, which holds 46 positions. Division of Economic Sustainability, which is 337 positions, currently 38 of those are vacant. Children's Services, 393 positions, 118 which of those are vacant. Finance and Operational Support, 79 positions, 12 of which are vacant. Child Support is 142 positions, 25 of which are vacant. Our total table of organization includes 1,000 full and part-time positions. Just wanted to also indicate, we are the largest department under the Board, and I think the other important thing I want to point out too, as far as our structure and organization, we are rare in the sense that we are one of the few Job and Family Services organizations in the country where all of the services that I just described and divisions I just described are under one umbrella, under the Job and Family Services umbrella. In other counties, other states, those divisions are standalone agencies in some cases with their own director, own budget, separate budget, those kinds of things. So, I just wanted to point that out. So, with respect to this slide, I just want to point out, we've made recent progress. If you point, if I look at children's services positions, 393 positions, 118 vacancies. I do want to report that we've made some progress in hiring recently, which is a positive sign. Happy about that. The numbers are trending upward in children's services, but also across the Board in the last couple of months, we've seen an increase in the number of applicants in our pipeline, and we're really happy with that development because that means the more folks that we have on the front line able to do the work, the better, more responsive we are to making sure that we provide the services to the community that we are mandated to provide. The other thing that I think has made an impact is that we've negotiated last year, or earlier this year, should I say, during our reopener with the union, increases in wages anywhere from 12 to 15 and a half percent across the Board earlier this year. And related to children's services, we also leveraged close to $1 million in new hire and retention bonuses, funding from Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to maintain staff. So, I think all of those things have had an impact on our ability, hopefully, to see an increase in the number of frontline positions being filled on our table of organization. Again, I talked a little bit about what we are continuing, what we see as related to challenges. Obviously, vacancies have been the largest challenge the last couple of years. I'd like to report that that is on the upswing. We meet regularly with our HR team every other week to target specifically what we're doing in the organization to be, to bring on talented folks to do the work that we are mandated to do, particularly in children's services. Also, beginning to work with Human Resources on succession planning. So, one of the challenges, obviously, is attrition. I think you've heard from other departments and other organizations during these hearings that we are no different. We have an older workforce and a younger workforce, and the gap in between is pretty wide. So, our goal is to really look at how we can continue to attract and retain new employees, younger employees, but also put plans in place to make sure that they have connections and assistance in navigating the organization. And so, a part of what we've accomplished too in the last year or so is our Project More, which is our mentoring program, which is addressing this challenge to mentoring staff with less, matching staff with more tenure to staff with less tenure. And also, just to report, our second mentoring class is graduating this Friday. So, that will have been close to 40 people that have gone through that program, who've been matched with a more senior leader to help them navigate the organization and hopefully retain them for a longer period of time in their role. The other thing is a shift towards PRC. I know as we shift away from the emergency rent utility assistance funding that we've done such an exceptional job of distributing over the last three years, our focus is to make sure that we are staffed up and ready to go. We have, PRC has been in place for years. It is our primary emergency assistance program that we're mandated to provide, and so, we want to make sure that as we transition, we have the staffing in place to begin to address what we expect to be more demand for that particular program. We're also working closely with our partners to establish meaningful connections, so our frontline staff have improved connections that provide meaningful help and direct connections to support those in need. Okay, budget highlight. I just want to talk briefly about expenses. This particular slide shows each fund area, our public assistance area, child support, workforce, and children's services in each one of these rows. Related to public assistance, you see a 12% increase for our allocation between 2023 budget and 2024 budget. Expenses increased approximately $14 million. This increase includes personnel costs of approximately $12 million due to newly negotiated wages, but also the pay study that was done for our exempt staff as well. Also, increased cost per county's allocation plan of about approximately $1 million, and the paid parking benefit for employees of approximately $80,000. For our child support program, our non-personnel expenses increased by about $600,000. This is primarily due to an increase in title 40 contract expenses of 300,000, approximately $300,000. And just to give you a little bit of background on expenses for our 40 contracts and child support, we have contracts with clerk courts, we have contracts with juvenile court, we have contracts with the Court of Domestic Relations, as well as the sheriffs to help the work of child support and partner with those organizations. There was also an increase in indirect cost to the charge to CSEA through the county's cost allocation plan of approximately $90,000. And in child support, personnel expenses increased approximately by $1.7 million. Again, this had to do with wage increases as a result of our negotiation with the union and also the exempt pay study. For workforce, expenses are slightly increased due to an increase in either planned services or increase in fees or cost of workforce services, smaller increase there of about 5%. And then finally, the children's services increase is about 1%, and that is related to, make sure I'm reading that right. Yeah, expenses are expected to increase $17 million through additional prevention services, which is $8 million for additional prevention services, additional care for children with multiple needs of about $7 million, and additional supports for kinship homes at about $1.5 million. And revenue, again, just to point out that our revenue allocations, our state and federal allocations, are determined at the state level, usually proportionally based on county size and the number of clients that we serve in each county. And you can see those are mostly remaining flat across the Board for all of our funds. Public assistance, you'll see a slight decrease of 1%. Child support, a 2% increase. Workforce, 5% increase, and children's services, a 3% decrease. That is related to federal, state, and local funding there based on our projections for 2024. And here's a slide that reflects the local funding that I described before related to the children's services levy. The green line is the revenues that we project over the next year in 2024. The orange line reflects the cash balance that we currently are projecting from 2023 to 2024, and the expenses are the blue line on the bottom that is being projected to increase from 2023 to 2024. Speaking specifically related to these expenses, we're expanding partnerships with organizations that provide services that can lead to reduction in child maltreatment, and this is also in addition to the cost for children that are already in care. Allocated $8 million in support of prevention programs and initiatives in the community. I think Judge Bloom mentioned earlier about the focus on prevention. We are looking as well at opportunities to partner with organizations in the community that address child maltreatment, the goal of which is to reduce the likelihood that a child will come into our child welfare organization because of abuse, neglect, or maltreatment. New programs for intimate partner violent interventions and school domestic violence education programs, and we are currently contracting and hope to have those contracts in place by early next year with 12 providers on prevention programs. Several of them are new, and we expect that to go in place in early January, so I'm excited about that. That was a part of our effort to make sure that we were looking at grassroots organizations, as well as larger organizations that are doing prevention work on the front end that support our mission of protecting and keeping kids safe. The other thing I want to point out related to the levy for between 2023 and 2024 is increased provider rates to keep up with the cost of living and to address placement challenges. So, as these contracts have come up for review, we have seen, we have negotiated an average of about 12% increase in their rates because, again, just like our staff, their provider organizations and their staff had gone through a time where they were not receiving regular increases, and we partner with these organizations, and we need them to be in a position to not only pay their staff a living wage and a reasonable wage, but also to have slots available for us as we partner with them to have places for our children to go. The other thing I want to point out here related to the levy is an increase in kinship supports, and also an increase for, potential increase for transition-age youth to get $1,000 stipend for 12 months. We're still working through that process, but our goal is to look at opportunities for kids that are in transition age as they age out of the foster care system and provide them with some income as they move forward so that they can be in a more stable position. So, we're working through the details of that, investigating what the implications will be on public assistance eligibility and other things like that. But that is a program we're also moving forward and implementing as it relates to the levy. So, priorities for 2024. Just want to get a brief update on that. Obviously, beyond your imagination, we've done a lot of good work so far this year. So far, we've served 1,047 participants through Reds Games, Taylor Swift tickets, FCC game, and other events. So, we'll stay focused on making sure that that program continues to provide opportunities to youth as we have so far this year. As I mentioned before, continued support through kinship programs and doing what we can to support families who work with us and are taking children in that they are related to. We know that children do better when they are with family, and so, our goal is to really make sure, to make sure that we're partnering with them, giving them the support through childcare and other means to make sure that those placements are stable. Ramping up prevention, retention, and contingency, I mentioned that earlier. Expanding support for prevention services, I also mentioned that earlier. Looking at ways to partner with unique and innovative organizations and initiatives in our community that push forward the idea that we all do better when children are safe and protected, and whatever we can do to prevent them from maltreatment, we want to make sure that we're in a position to try to support that. The Office of Youth as well is a priority. So far this year, we have served about 1,293 youth. We have currently employed 177 youth. 167 youth have been credentialed. Total wages earned for the youth population so far, since the program's inception, is $2 million, around $2 million. They have earned $155,000 in incentives, support services, and transportation of around $48,000 for a total direct impact of $2.2 million. So, we'll continue, obviously, with that, with that program as well, which has been wildly successful. Staffing stabilization, technology improvements is not on the slide, but we mentioned earlier at a presentation a couple of weeks ago related to our internal staff and looking at ways through our organization with our contracting software and other software to streamline work and make sure that we are in a position to meet the demands of the public. And then finally, what else is not listed there is continuing to support through our community outreach team, our 513 relief efforts in the community. We have been extremely successful in that regard as well. On the bus, we've served close to 6,000 people with support services through our 513 relief efforts, and we'll continue to be a key player on the 513 relief bus to make sure that we are providing services that we offer to our community. That concludes my presentation, and I am open for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Now, open it up, Vice President Dreyhouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Director, for being here and for the presentation. A couple of things. A number of years ago, we received a chart that, and I hope I remember this correctly. So, it had the calls to service, or calls in to JFS, and then there was how many kids went into our care, and then there was how many kids went into kinship. And what we were starting to see was... And what we were starting to see was, given some of the work we had done on kinship, was that the calls, I think, did not go down, but the kids that were going into care went, did go down because some of them were going into kinship. So we were diverting some of the kids into what we all view as a better option. Some of the stipend was part of that and we talked through that. Can you provide that chart to us? Just so, it's helpful to see the trends in the impact of policy and budget changes wherein, you know, we in Hamilton County continue, and we did then, made a real commitment to incentivize kinship care and make sure that those who were providing kinship care had the stipend that was also going to the foster families. And so I think it might be helpful now a couple of years out to see if those trend lines have continued. I just, it just would be helpful for me to see the visual. So I hope you, I remember Moira Weir was the one that brought it in, so it's been a while back.
Still track that data, Commissioner, and we can certainly get that to the board to see the impact of those policy changes. We know we've seen more children locally go into, into kinship care. And we think the outcomes have been positive related to that policy of providing financial support, equal financial support for kinship providers compared to foster care providers as well as wraparound childcare vouchers and things of that nature to help stabilize those placements. So I can certainly get that to you guys.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, and the budget piece, I don't want to lose that because it is budget season. So, you know, we had to allocate dollars to make that happen. I just want to, it would be helpful to see the results of those changes. So you mentioned that as of late, you've gotten more applications for some of the positions at JFS. And I continue to hear, and I know my staff would back this up, that we continue to get calls into the office about some of the delays related to childcare vouchers, related to different kinds of assistance. And so it's gratifying to know that you've got applicants coming in. So in light of the wage increases and some of the other, can you help us better understand some of the other things beyond just wages that have, are happening at JFS that might attribute to an increase in applications, if you can?
Sure. I think in children's services in particular, we've been, we've given really a lot of attention to working directly with HR in trying to streamline the process and the amount of time it takes for us to bring people on board with the background checks and going through BCI and FBI print. That can take a long time. And so I know what we've implemented in child welfare in particular is that we have a team dedicated to working with applicants to make sure that we're in constant communication with them. We do tours before they start to give them an idea of what the job looks like and what, what is involved in working in that area in particular. I think we, you may have heard this before, but I think we also continue to utilize virtual reality headsets for folks early on so that they get a viewpoint of what a day in the life of a caseworker looks like. We've done some work and indeed in terms of promoting that vacancy in a different way than we have in the past. So I think our work there to promote those opportunities at Job and Family Services and Child Welfare in particular have had an impact on the number of our exposure and the number of people who are looking to get into the workforce and have chosen to apply at Job and Family Services and Child Welfare. So I think it's not attributable to one thing, but we've done a variety of different things in the organization to really target how we can be more, more of an employer of choice in that regard. And I think we're starting to see some payoff in that area, so.
I do see the photos and the weekly rap
Yeah.
of all the employees coming in. So it, again, it's
Sizes are growing.
It's encouraging, yeah, to see that. One last thing. So as ERAP winds down, and I know that we are, we have stopped accepting applications, the money is spent. And so as we think through that and know that there are folks that will still be having challenges paying their rent, you know, you talked about it a little bit. I just want you to elaborate on, on what it looks like at JFS when we've got some folks that might qualify for other things. They would have applied for the eviction prevention money. That, that money is no longer available. So what does that process look like for that kind of individual then that might qualify for something else, but they don't know it because they have in the past not applied for it?
In terms of our basic, I just wanted
Well, just in terms of, you know, as, as people realize that the ERAP dollars are gone, how do we kind of fill that gap with, with some services? Not everyone will qualify.
Yeah.
But some will qualify. And so how do you make sure that people are aware of, you know, that JFS has the ability to kind of run the traps on that to see if there's anything available for somebody that's in that situation?
We started internally already. We met about a week ago with all of our frontline child, our front-facing customer service staff to let them know what was happening and to get their feedback honestly about how we can help them get access to resources. They're really very familiar with what we have in terms of the services that we provide in terms of helping folks that may qualify for some of our services but need some additional supports. We really are depending heavily on our partners at 211 and other organizations that we know fill that space. And so I think part of that is to have those providers be more present as well as we go out into the community and talk about how we make this transition. But we've met and talked with all of those providers that we know fill that space, the strategies in homelessness, our partners at 211. We've talked to all of the utility companies, organizations that we know are in the space to help people bridge that gap in addition to what we already provide through PRC. So I think it's a matter of being available, talking with customers about what their options are, looking at what the eligibility looks like and really being able to have a warm handoff to those organizations in a meaningful way so that they can get the services and the support that they need. We do know that the ERAP program had a really, really low threshold in terms of eligibility. It was COVID-related. And so there were a lot of people who were eligible to receive that benefit. And so we really have been talking about what the implications of that will be when that is no longer available in our community. So we have been in constant contact with our partners, making sure that all of our resources, that public-facing resources and websites have resources that we believe people in that, in that situation are going to need to have access to. And our staff are prepared to make sure that we make that, make that connection happen.
Great. I'm glad that you're so forward-thinking on that. And I do, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that $100 million went out in emergency rental assistance in this community and JFS was the cog that churned all that money out. So I want to thank you and your team for making that happen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of comments on the expenses area on the budget. You had a 12% increase under public assistance. Does that have something to do with the SNAP benefits being cut and trying to undergird the people that lost those benefits under budget highlights expense? You had a 12% increase
Yes, Commissioner, it's a good question. That's not tied to SNAP at all. Those are all passed through direct funding that are not included in the budget. We are specifically looking at personnel costs and non-personnel costs associated with that increase in the public assistance area. So that had to do with our wage negotiations with the union and also our wage study for exempt staff.
Okay, thank you. And also I look at the children's levy fund as going down, which believe it or not is a good thing because we had such a great reserve there and we were not using those monies as adequately as we could. But it goes, your priorities indicate how those funds were like a spin down to make sure you can establish your priorities and follow through on those priorities. So that, I mean, that's a good thing. We're using that money. It's not just sitting there. So I wanted to make a comment about that. Couple of other things. The paid parking benefit that you do for your staff, I think you said it was $80,000. And I would like for us as a board to look, look at how we can help our staff. We've been talking about parking and walking and how do you get to the building and it's late and the safety of it and the convenience of it and how you were able to make that happen. I don't know, being in JFS, I don't know if it's different for us, but we need to do something for our staff as it relates to parking and the benefit and incentive. That's nothing you can do, but I'm going to ask our board to kind of look because we've been talking about it for a couple of years, how to be more accommodating to our staff. And lastly, as you look at attrition, just wondering, and you probably do, your outreach with social work schools in this area and whether or not you're using any of those that are in the department, any of those students to not only be interns, but as field placements and to grab on them, grab them early while they're still studying social work, what your relationship is.
That's a really good question. Good point. We are continually exploring those options with our child welfare team. That's a part of our strike team to look at these options and see, to see how we might be able to leverage students that are coming out that are interested in going into children's services work or child welfare work early. And so we're in conversations with that. I can get you more specifics. I do know we have, we do have some relationships with local universities around that and we've had some differing degrees of success with that, but I can certainly let you know more details about exactly where that, where that work stands. But we do talk about that in our conversation with HR about how we can increase our recruitment of new staff to do this work.
And I would think to get them even before they're getting ready to graduate, I don't know, freshmen, sophomores, and get that excitement going and not at the time that they're getting ready to graduate, just kind of build it up and to know the need, the desperate need that you guys have. So I'm glad that you're filling more positions, but if I can help in any way with that, let me know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to take a step back so I can fully understand the financing. I'll say before, when I ran for office, there was not COVID at the beginning. And my number one thing that I heard as I went across the county and I talked to people was that the complaints were around jobs and family service. Now, this is before your tenure, so it's nothing personal. In fact, I was part of the group that we hired, you know, when we got a chance to hire someone. I think this is the only position that the board gets a chance to hire. Everybody else is hired solely by the administrator. And the number one, my number one issue was changing jobs and family services to go from what was once looked at as a welfare model, which is a type of mindset, to a customer service model. Now, once I got elected, we had COVID. So we had all this ARPA dollars. And to be clear, the ERAP dollars could only be used for ERAP. So even though I'd love for us to take credit, this money was said by the federal government, you can have it, but it only can be used for ERAP. So the jump up said, we did $100 million. It only could be used for that. It wasn't like the $158 million where we could say, well, now we want this much over here and only that much over there. So the federal government had decided that this money had to go to helping people with their rent, with their, their gas and electric, their water. You couldn't even use it for mortgage at that time, if I'm mistaken. So then I got off of that about, but now since we're seeing, you know, in these programs and we're going to, now we got to get back to jobs and family services. And what I want to see is a customer service model. So I want to preference my comments with that based on all the feedback. And I didn't have, I could have got Vader to bring me, we keep all of, it's a lot of complaints about jobs and family services. And it's not just on ERAP. There's a lady on here now that just tagged me saying she was on hold for eight hours with jobs and family service. She thought the mayor was, so she went after the mayor and somebody said, no, call Commissioner Reese, that's under the county. And she only tagged my name. She didn't tag everybody's names. She tagged me. So if she on the phone for eight hours, that's outside of ERAP. Because she was talking about some other issue that she had with jobs and family service. So we tell everybody, go to the telephones. That's how we used to do it. And people be on hold like this lady for eight hours. So I want to preference my comments with that. We're going into this new budget or '24, as you said. I wanted to find out financially, how are you funded versus the levy?
Okay.
Because I want to maybe, I don't know, the way that, I remember when I first got elected, Jeff was trying to explain it to me. And he said something about if we didn't have these levies, it would have to come out of our regular general fund. So can you show me this much, it's because on your chart, you had the federal, but I need to know also where does the taxpayer piece come in?
Well, the levy is fully funded. Local tax dollars go to the children's services levy. The allocations that we get from the state and federal government come directly from the state and they're allocated to counties typically using a methodology that looks at the amount of work we do on each program. So child support, our, some of our 4E dollars is in children's services. So that's a combination of levy and also 4E allocation for the work that we do. And our public assistance area is the same way. And those allocations are determined at the state level for each county based on the size of the county, based on the number of clients we have. And they fund that based on the mandated service in that particular division. So for example, in client services, they look at the number of SNAP applications we process, how timely we process those, Medicaid the same way. And so those allocations are allocated based on that. And child welfare, children's services levy is the local portion of that. And we are unique in the sense that not every county has a children's services levy. So we have a lot more opportunity and flexibility to partner with folks in the community as well as do additional things like kinship care, wraparound services that other counties may not be able to provide. So, but the local levy is our, is the funding that we get to provide, to keep children safe in the county.
Got you. So everyone gets to vote on that. How much money does that come in each year?
Next year?
Yeah.
Next year, 70 million. That's what we're projecting based on, that's our revenue projection for, for next year.
Okay. What was the $100 million that was sitting?
I think that was the balance after it passed initially, if I'm not mistaken. So when it initially passed in 2021, going into 2022, that's when that initial increase happened. And so we have been spending that down, obviously with what I mentioned before, increasing rates to providers, kinship wraparound services, prevention services and things like, of that nature.
Okay. The reason I asked, I wanted to have a look at that because I wanted to see if we, I don't want to just be holding money at a time when the people need the money. And at that time, it's $100 million and I wanted to put something forward to return it to the taxpayers because we don't want to just, you know, they need their money. And Jeff indicated, let's take, we're going to do an assessment of this. I don't know when that assessment will take place.
Well, based on what I know now in terms of what we project for 2024, we can, we can give you that. I think it's a little bit of, is included. We can give you more detail in terms of what we anticipate for 2024 in terms of what we will expend through the levy, through these initiatives that I described and prevention and other areas where we want to do more proactive things. Historically, that funding has been spent for children in care almost exclusively. And so I think we have an opportunity to be a little bit more progressive in addressing other areas in the community that can, that can reduce the incidence of maltreatment.
Yeah, I want to know what that is because I know last time when we had a meeting about it, it was kind of, we didn't know, and I didn't want to start, we making up stuff because we got the money and let's make up something. So I wanted to get that because I never got it because that's one of the things I want to look at. Can there be a refund, a rebate to the taxpayers if I'm just hoarding $100 million and now I got to come up with some stuff to try to use it? So just wanted to get that if, as we go into this. You had promised me that you were going to do an assessment of it or something and get something to us. I don't know what the timeline was.
Yeah, so, and I think part of that relates to, just as Director Patton indicated, the since the levy passed, the development of a suite of programs focusing on everything from staffing retention to increase, increases in whether it's kinship, trauma-informed care for children in homes, preventative services, all of those things were talked about as being things that the department, the agency would attempt to do if the levy were funded at the amount that it was ultimately passed at. But we knew it was going to take a little bit of time to ramp that programming up, especially over COVID. And now this is really the first year where I think we are actually legitimately projecting a substantive drawdown in the levy balance of 40-plus million dollars to, as these services are implemented. So as we go into that, if we, if we find as we get into next year with all of those services, everything I just said, that we are not able to do that and the levy, and the levy balance is staying the same at that high level for whatever reason it is, that's when I think there is a legitimate conversation. that's when I think there is a legitimate conversation to have with the board about what's the disposition of that levy balance. If we are seeing what we are projecting now, I think the levy is up in twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So the mid-cycle review is happening also next year. So we will have that conversation as well at that time.
So we've got twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. If we're looking at a drawdown of forty million dollars a year, we're looking at spending those dollars in precisely the way that the board had sized the levy initially when it had gone into place a couple of years ago. But that's, this year is a seminal year in that regard to see how these programs are implemented in that respect.
President Reese, the other thing I'd add to that too is that when that passed, we've been looking really carefully at the Tax Labor Review Committee recommendations, which were new and different and innovative. And so it was really the first opportunity where we were looking at different ways of leveraging that funding to do more broad, broad service to children in our community that we believe will have an impact. So that, the Tax Labor Review information at that time was, was really innovative and new in terms of how we could use that funding. So we were looking at ways to, to honor what the, what the Tax Labor Review Committee recommended.
Yeah, because I was looking at that, and I'm looking at that area has the largest vacancy, according to your report.
Correct.
And we've had a lot of money, a hundred million dollars was hanging around. And now if we're, if our position is, you know, board, I'm looking for you to come up. I got some programs I can come up with. But if the position is this is going to help us, you know, get more positions filled, I, I gotta see, you know, if you, what you're talking about pay and those kind of things. So I wanted to bring that up. And, you know, that's, that's definitely something I've been looking at before these programs came about, because I wanted to, you know, I thought a hundred million dollars is a lot of money. It could be hanging around. Now, with that, I've got some other things. And I would ask the board to indulge with me the same respect as I indulge with them when they have questions and programs. On your, where we go from here page, you can put this one up. The page on, so you'll get me the balance that we have?
Yes.
In there? We don't have that today, the number. Is it seventy million in there?
Children's Services balance.
How much? Do you have the two pager on you that you can tell us on the microphone? Thank you. What's the number? I just needed to tell the number. It's not just for me. My questions are not just my questions. These questions for the voters.
I'm sorry, President, or Reese, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, just tell me what, do you know the balance? If not, you can get it to us later, but I was just wondering if we had the balance.
Our projected for the end of this year is a hundred and seventy-one million dollars.
Hundred and seventy-one million balance in the children's service?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Hundred and seventy-one million. Okay. So, but I am interested here what that is because I thought it was only a hundred million, but it's.
Well, the cash balance is a hundred and seventy-one million by the end of the year.
Gotcha. Okay. With that, can you pull up your priorities? Going, yeah, the forward, yep. So you put priorities. So here's some of the things I was thinking. Number one, I, I don't know what it is about this bus. I've had to fight like hell for this bus from the beginning of the idea to getting it done to, I've had a lot of battles on Zoom, in this room, and everywhere else except out there with the people. I don't understand why the five-one-three relief bus wouldn't be a priority. Jobs and family services is the safety net of the entire county, is what I believe. And that's what I wanted to look at. I don't see anything on here that has new technology, how we're going to improve. Because our payment system has been jacked up. We haven't been able to pay people. How do we have new technology to move us forward? I, you know, even in the interview, I said, I'm looking for some new innovative ways, anything on here that moves us to a customer service thing. And it's not to knock anybody else's initiatives. I, I think I'm the only one initiatives always get knocked. I don't knock any other people initiatives. But the five-one-three relief bus is not the rent and utility bus only. It was to do mobile services, taking these services out to the community. We could take that down. Take it out to the community. And it just tells a lot by it not even being considered as a priority. It's the one thing that twelve thousand people done been helped between the old bus that we, I had to get an old bus. We got it out there with UC Health. I had to go get UC Health. I had to, I mean, it was, it's just been a lot. And it ain't me because all of us get the same checks every day. It's the people. And something that has helped twelve thousand people, and I wasn't going to get like this today, but it really ticks me off. That everything else, we're hiring new people for, but we can't hire enough people to process six thousand people who are in the queue that need to get their gas and electric and their rent paid. We can hi- hire new people for different things, but we can't hire nobody to get the stuff out to this amount of people. And I just, I don't see nothing new going forward. It's keep the hundred and seventy million dollars. So we make up a few programs, but I don't, and it's nothing, we can still do all these programs. But I don't see where five-one-three relief bus is left behind. Now, I know I'll get challenged, and I don't care. I don't care about, because I'm talking to the people out there that got to vote for these children levies, the people out there that's got to vote for us. That's the only people I care about. Because everybody in here is taken care of. Everybody in here got a salary. Everybody in here got health benefits. We're taken care of. I'm talking about the people out there that ain't taken care of. So the thing to say, we're going to move them to two-one-one. Two-one-one is to call and refer you to some help, but ain't nowhere to refer when you call two-one-one. Otherwise, these people would never showed up at the bus. Number two, you said, well, we're going to send them to the homeless strategy. Everybody there ain't homeless. We trying to keep them from getting homeless. There's no way to send the people. That's why they were getting help from us. Now, moving forward, the bus is supposed to be way more. You said you talked to everybody. Well, I went out to the buses in Sherrville, and the lady running the bus said she didn't know it had, it was stopping on Tuesday. I don't know who's telling what and who's telling what, but she's right down the hall. My point to all of that is, I don't see nothing new, not just the bus, but I don't see nothing innovative. Now, maybe you've got one or two programs or whatever, but how do you hire new people for that? And you can't get nobody hired for getting the six thousand, you know, not just the six thousand. But we also have the group home people, and we try to, you know, give them a bad rap. I mean, I'm glad you cleared it up. Oh, they're not filling out their paperwork. They filled out their paperwork correctly. So my point is, as we're moving forward, if it was me, I'm coming, what's the new thing? We're going to come to this, I want a customer service line. I want to have weekly reports on how many people we done really helped. As we move forward with the sixty-five-hundred people that's in the pipeline, I want a weekly report every week. How many people have we gotten out of that pipeline since we're stopping? And I'm for getting the people. It never was a pipeline people versus new people for me. It's the fact that people out here really are struggling. And, and I wish I could turn my, I wish I was the type of person that could just say, well, you know, I'm elected and I'm somebody, and y'all, I, I'm not that person. I can't do it. I can't turn my back. I, I don't know. I try to come in today to say, hey, let's just, I can't. I got to say something. So I would like to see a cus-, what are we doing that's going to be new to improve customer service, to improve our payment system, to improve our application system? Now, we're doing other stuff on the bus, which is what you should be doing anyway. You're supposed to be the safety net. Here's what we're rolling out with the bus. You have other things. I have no problem with that. Office of Youth, it seems like you're doing okay. I, I haven't had time to dig into it. But I do want to see as many young people connected to jobs. When I was on council, it was two thousand, and that's just in the city of Cincinnati. So those are the kind of numbers that I want to see. But when I look at hearing these priorities, and I'm looking like, wow, I don't see nothing that's like, how are we going to transform now that COVID's over? Well, it's not over, as Keston told us. But how are we going to improve these systems? The bus is just, it's just Hamilton County on wheels. It's bringing Hamilton County to these communities. And unfortunately, we haven't captured it on video or film. I don't see, you know. I'm out there. I'm seeing these people. They crying, black, white, young, old, veterans, non-veterans, small businesses. They're happy and thankful, not just for ERAP, but for other services that you provide. Like I said, a lady didn't even know about kinship, but she came out there because y'all do the triage of everything. She found out about the kinship program. So I'm not against these programs. I'm for these programs. But I'm looking at, how do we go to customer ser-, how do we improve customer service? How do we go to a customer service model? The five-one-three mobile operations, what do we do? How do we connect with that? But it's not even listed on a, you named it, but it ain't listed on a priority. So that makes me kind of.
That, that was an oversight, Commissioner, President. That was not clearly what we've done with five-one-three relief is a priority. We've been working on it for three years. So that, that was an oversight on my part.
And then the technology I talked about, like how do we, we talked about, you know, I like to see that on there. We're going to now use technology. How, you talked about some things that you wanted to do. But the technology to improve payments, applications, customer service, those kind of things that can be maybe automated or bring us up to speed through technology.
Absolutely. We, we work to a large degree with state systems, but there are some opportunities for us to have some flexibility local, locally with the systems. So we'll work on getting, getting you an idea of what, what our, what our options are here locally to, to work within the systems that we are assigned by the state, but also see if there's some innovative ways we can do to improve that.
Got you. And then you have mentioned that, but I do want to look at that fund, the child services piece, just to get a better understanding of it. So I do appreciate, I do appreciate that. Those are the questions that I, that I, that I had. We had mentioned the child support component. You were saying about some innovative things, but you didn't put it in here is that, I know we're talking about taking people's driver's license, right, which I disagree with because I don't, you can't get to the job. Now you got a suspended license. Now you going to jail. Now you can't pay child support. And you said, not to say we'd get rid of that, but there was some other things you were going to look into, some innovative things to still collect the child support, but also making sure the person.
Yeah, that, that, that was for twenty twenty-three, working with the Office of Reentry on populations returning, returning citizens who we know, those who have child support orders, making sure that those are modified in a meaningful way and right size, but also helping the staff that work in the Department of Reentry have a better understanding of what the child support program can and can't do. So I, I want to make sure we're giving out accurate information so that folks that are returning, are returning citizens, have opportunities to look at waiver and compromise of state-owned arrears and those kinds of things. There's options that don't get a lot of publicity, but our, our plan and what we have been doing is working with the Office of Reentry on making sure that those folks are aware of their options. And we have a really close relationship with the Office of Reentry to make sure we're having those conversations on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you. I just didn't, I, well, I know you can't put everything in here, but I wanted to make sure that that is also one of your initiative priorities that you were, because I thought that was good. I just would like maybe Administrator, your weekly report that you give to us, maybe highlighting on that sixty-five-hundred number, how many we, we helped, you know, now we down to, you know, five thousand. Now we down to four. If we can get that, that would help in your report that you.
I will, I will certainly provide that to, to the board. We're going to obviously look at that on a regular basis because we want to make sure that we are servicing the folks that are desperately in need to have the applications reviewed and looked at. So we'll, we'll make sure we give you a report on that.
Yeah, because I think we definitely need to try to get it done before the end of the year. I forgot to ask the auditor, what is her cutoff for writing checks? That was one of my questions. I just looked down and forgot to ask.
One of the priorities that she put up, I'll just mention this too, had to do with technology and, and their system as well. So we're, you know, we stand at the ready to talk about how we can make sure we're partnering with, with her and her department to try to streamline what we've done. So a lot of the payments, a lot of the increases, I'm sure that she talked about in terms of processing payments came from ERAP over, over that, over this year. So we're, we're looking forward to partnering any way we can to, to make sure we eliminate bottlenecks when it comes to that from a, from a JFS and auditor relationship.
Okay, that's good. But Mr. Ludo, we do need to know what's her, what's, what's the last time she going to write the check? Because if we got sixty-five-hundred people, we want to.
Do you know when the auditor typically shuts down the system for what that date typically is? Okay, all right. We'll, we'll find, we'll find out. Get you a clear date on that.
John says usually about two weeks before the end of the, end of the year.
Okay. Yeah, because I remember the last one said the first or second week of December. So I just wanted to make sure of that. Commissioner Dooley?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. As it relates to the children's levy reserve, the people voted that in and approved the children's levy, and I would be adamantly against using it for anything other than children as far as a refund to taxpayers or whatever it may be, that there are a multitude of children out there, the numbers I don't even want to count, that are in so much need, even though the reserve is high. We can come up with, and not just make up, but develop some great programming for our children so they can get what they deserve. Wanted to make a comment about that. And also, a hundred million you mentioned through ERAP that we have dispersed. And that's not a little thing. That's a major thing. There are a lot of counties that came nowhere near where we are as far as the allocation of those funding. So you and your staff should be very proud, and the commission for agreeing to disperse those funds. And then lastly, I know you apologize for not making the five-one-three bus a priority. I see the bus as a priority for our board. We adamantly support it. Five-one-three continue to support. And there has never been any discussion about not supporting the five-one-three buses. So, I mean, if you want to add it as a priority, I think every department could add it as a priority. But I think it's our commission, it's our board to make sure it happened, continues to happen, and continues to be adequately sta-, staffed, and that we continue to be in the community with that bus. So really, if you think it's an oversight, but I know you've been working within it. And so, and, you know, I just heard earlier, went through hell for five-one-three bus. And my opinion is there was no hell on my part and on the board. Everything that was brought forward to this board, we agreed on, continued to fund, and continue to advocate for five-one-three bus because we know the impact that it's had in our community. So I just want to make it clear for those that are listening, there was no battle as it relates to the five-one-three bus. Always discussion, but no battle as far as this board. Everything was unanimously agreed on, and we will continue to do that as it relates to the bus and what we can provide to the community. That's all I have.
Yeah, let me just say there was a battle. We had to get a lot of people to come and testify. Kind of when you're going through the battle is kind of, you know, I don't remember it, but it was not an easy. It was a lot of, a lot. People had to pack it out. But at the same time, we could go with everything on that priority list. Beyond imagination was a board initiative. We supported it unanimously and didn't have to bring anybody down here. We went right with it. And I supported, I thought it was great, supported it, not a lot of questioning, went with it. But it's on there as a priority. In fact, even hired a person for that position. And I'm just saying, when I come with something, you, you know, I have to tell you what, you know, what it is. It's, it is what it is. And so if the bus is the priority and JFS is a major. And so the bus is the priority and JFS is a major portion of it. It's really, the, the majority of it is jobs and family services and the health components. So to come in after, I've had, had multiple votes and we had, I mean, it was hard to get this, to get the bus, uh, had to go and get, you know, UC Health, private entity, had to fly to, uh, flew down in the midst of coronavirus, it wasn't even COVID back then, to prove and show that this is a bus, had to get Hampton University, uh, to help give us the information, how it worked. Uh, even had her on Zoom, we were meeting on Zoom at that time, NAACP, the Urban League, uh, Walker Funeral Home. A lot of folks then had to go out myself to prove that it can work, because we didn't have any marketing money, uh, to prove that it can work, um, and then it did work. And then once every time, it's always these little comments or jabs. Uh, I don't get involved in that. Only reason I'm going with it is because this is what the people wanted. And I'm just asking on here, if jobs and family service is a major component of it, I don't see how we forget it. So that's all I'm asked to be a priority. If any other commissioner wanted something to be a priority, I wouldn't have a, I, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even rebuttal it. I would just, it should be on there. If, if the board voted on it and the board wanted it, I would, it would be no rebuttal for me. So, uh, I would like to have it included on it. I'd like it to be a priority as part of not excluding anything. Um, the hundred million dollars is people, when they go and vote for these levies, um, and I'm hearing the feedback, when you go and vote for something, they say it's a dire need, so you run and vote for it. Of course, I want children, I want to help children, I want to help all these people. But they get angry when they find out it's, you done hoarded a hundred million dollars and you didn't have nothing to use it for. Because I gave you my last dime, because I thought this is what you, you know, you were on your last dime. So that's why I wanted to, it's not to use it for any other things, give it back to the people that voted for it. Because at the time when they were doing commercials, I was not elected, it was, it's a dire need, you gotta do it, we won't be able to help youth, we won't be to help children. But then you find out we, we, we sitting on a hundred and seventy-eight million. So that's why I wanted to know what is, if it's going to. Uh, of course, we could come up with a lot of different things, but I want to know what is gonna be the real, the real use. And that's what people get mad. Go to levy, you got one commercial, and then after the levy's passed, it's something totally different. And I want to change that, to be honest. Even in the levy language, whatever we put on, that's what people get angry about. You said one thing, and then you get the levy, and then you, you behind the scenes doing something else, not just on this levy. It might be other levies. So that's just where I'm particularly coming from. Uh, and everybody has a choice, but I think the information should be out there, and I'd like to get the information and, and find out what our, uh, goal is.
Get that to you. Uh, President Reese, absolutely. Uh, I'll just read, I'll just read.
Let me just clarify, as it relates to, uh, I can understand why BYI was a pri- priority on your list because the money is coming from Ja- Job and Family Services, not out of our, our general budget, and we did not hire a new staff. Maybe you're talking about the Inspire Initiative where we, where we hired, uh, someone. So, um, I just wanted to cl- to clarify that, and also, um, I'm gonna leave it at that.
And there's no problem, I want to be clear, I have no problem with any of the initiatives. When I vote for something, I have no problem with it. Where I'm at, where I'm talking about, this bus is gonna be around beyond, beyond this time. So we will be utilizing other funds for it. And all I'm saying is, you are one of the main people on the bus. So I don't even know why we going back and forth about this. Honestly, if someone else asks this, I'd be like, okay, move on, it's not my issue. But, um, I want to just be clear that that's the reason I think it should be, I don't think it should be...
It was an oversight.
Yeah, and I don't think, and I, and I, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so we could...
Yes, I understand completely, it was not, it was an omission on my part, not intended to, uh, as a lack of reflection on whether or not it's a priority. Our staff has been out there every day with the bus. We are fundamental, uh, service provider on the bus. We will continue to do that, and certainly it is a pri- priority for me and priority for our organization. So, uh, happy to, uh, make sure I clarify that publicly. Uh, but that was just an omission, that it was not on the list. It was, uh, it was certainly, uh, something that should have been on the list.
No, I appreciate that, because I know you're gonna be part of the major planning of what happens for next year. So I just wanted to make sure it was included.
Can I, can I just weigh in? So, especially related to the levy, the reason we talked about an increase to the levy because there were some state things that were happening, we were very concerned about state funding, um, and, and a reduction there. Beyond that, if, we've asked every other department about the vacancies, about fully funding their vacancies. And, um, if, if, there are two-hundred-and-one positions vacant at Jobs and Family Services, which relates to the delay in response to individuals that are calling, and we all get the calls, about childcare or some kind of assistance. And so, from my perspective, if we could fill the vacancies, that's about twenty grand, or, I'm sorry, twenty million, twenty million dollars. Um, so that takes a, a pretty large portion of that, um, the, the levy dollars that are available. I would be a hundred percent behind that. I am a hundred percent for that. Um, and that is part of the vision here is to, to fund some of the, the priorities, or priorities they are or are not listed here. But the basic services are, I think, what we hear about on a daily basis and some of the access to the resources that can be made available through JFS. So I just want to say that, that those dollars that are in the residual for the levy, um, are not, and, you know, they're meant for some innovative things, preventive things, as you say. I think it's an inflection point for JFS. We're not in a position where we have to respond, respond, respond to dire circumstances all the time. Uh, we're starting to think differently about preventive services, about handling, I remember talking about going into the home before the child is removed, trying to do some preventive things to keep kids safe in the community. So I, I remember that when we were talking about this increase in the levy, or rather, the support for it, and, and what some of those, um, priorities were. And so I, while they're not all listed here, um, I understand that. The other thing is, I want, I want to say that, that other commissioners have priorities listed here. Um, that's fine, I've supported these priorities. Um, it, but I, I do want to note that, that with the bus in particular, we, we either hired people or we put people over there, because every time I go out to the bus, which I do periodically, um, in support of the, the notion of the bus, but also in support of the communities and the services that are there in partnership, there are lots of JFS employees there, making sure that people have an access point for, whether it's E-Rap or something else. And so, I don't know, I don't really know if people were hired for that purpose, uh, in particular, or if they were moved from something else over to the bus. But there are, there is a lot of support back there, which I sup- I mean, I support that. But, uh, JFS has stepped into that space, and the tables are, you know, lined up, and there's more support from JFS than any other partner agency, as it should be. I mean, that's how it was set up to function, um, and I'm happy to support that.
We did, we put that in the budget last, our, right now through our...
So there were people hired.
That's correct.
And, and there's a manager for the bus that is hired to coordinate things, so I'd, so people...
That was through ARPA, yeah.
Well, well, but there, there was money allocated, uh, to make sure that was successful. So I don't, it was, it's not as if this board said, oh no, we've got a bus and we're not going to fund anything. I mean, we hired new people to go out there and a coordinator to coordinate their trips, uh, which is fine. But I, I don't want it to, to seem as though we didn't support it financially.
Yeah, I think the question was, it wasn't in the priorities, that was my question.
Oh, wow.
And then it went to a whole nother level when it said it don't need to be there, it don't have to be there. Then I, that, that's when I got, I had to step in.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, yeah, as far as support, I think that was, that was an issue. And Jeff, how much did we spend for the five-one-three bus, just establishing the bus? It's, I know the bus was a half a million, but as we look at the funding...
The line item in the ARPA budget is, was initially five million, I think.
Okay, so that shows, I mean, that we've supported it. Um, and so there's no question of support. And I just don't want the residents that are listening to think that we did not support it. And, uh, you brought up about all these people you brought in to validate it, but when you're talking about spending that amount of money, that's a good way of due diligence to make sure that we support it. So, uh, I think it's just a, um, it's making it sound like we did not support it, and we supported it in so many ways, um, that it should not be a picture that's painted to the residents in our community that we did not support. This bu- this bus is a, a board bus, it's not just one person's bus. This is a board bus that we all agreed on and understood the importance of it, and I think it's not being relayed that way. And so that's why I needed to speak up.
Well, I think the, the issue was, I asked about, everybody had their own questions. I didn't butt into anyone else's questions. My question was, why was the bus not a priority? And then the response was your response.
I have a right to a response.
You have a right to, and I have a right to respond to you, you're not gonna bully me, okay? I want to, I want to, I want to handle that now.
You're the bully.
You've been doing that for a long time.
You're the bully, you're the bully.
I will now, out of order.
Yeah, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
You always are.
Thank you, mister, thank you, thank you, mister director.
Thank you, board.
So let's stop it right now, we're not gonna go there. Next is a planning development, planning and development.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
All right, I know that, uh, there's been some very important agencies and offices before you today, and, uh, thank you for waiting for me, and...
Yes, you're the most important.
And so from that point, I, I look at hitting for average in baseball is a good thing. We've had some good heavy hitters here and make some great presentations. I'll try to make it brief for your time, um, and I'll be, have a few slides here, we'll just go over from that standpoint. Uh, planning and development, uh, uh, I am James Noes, the director. Department, excuse me, five divisions. Uh, we have three, uh, funds today, uh, as part of the all-funds budget presentation. There's the general fund budget, stormwater and, uh, budget, and also the water rotary budget. Generally, we are a, um, a permitting agency, that's, uh, where the revenues come in and those expenditures relate to that. So we have, uh, another restricted fund, which is the community development, uh, which is HUD, and that's on a different schedule and you won't see that. So these, again, uh, relate to the permitting side of things. Just jump right into the numbers here in front of you. What you have, and I'm gonna put on my glasses so I can see a little better here. Revenue-wise, uh, as a permitting agency, we don't know what comes into our door. So on the building side, on zoning side, subdivision, uh, and, uh, plan review, uh, it depends on what comes through our, our door on a regular basis. We take an, uh, approximation of what it should be from prior years. Uh, as you see, our last year's revenue, our budget was a little bit more. Uh, last year, uh, in twenty-twenty-two, we had a record year as far as, uh, building permits and activity, and so we saw a lot of revenue. So the revenue was projected up a little bit. It's gonna fall a little bit below that this year, so we've adjusted that revenue. So you see a large difference in there. Again, that's just an approximation, we don't know what comes in through there. So on the expense side, um, the, what I'll point to you on there, um, we do have an increase of about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Essentially, we are adding one new position, so you see in personnel, it's about two-hundred thousand there. Um, the rest of that is an adjustment that we made, similar to the, um, I believe as the auditor's office spoke earlier, we found that we had eleven open positions, um, so the compensation study, which was done in the adjustment, there were eleven positions which were open, the, the rest of the positions were adjusted, uh, during the, um, two-thousand-twenty-three budget. However, this year, we found that those eleven positions needed to be adjusted as well, and they were not adjusted. So those positions were adjusted as of such, so that's those positions. So that's all within the personnel side of things. Beyond that, there's nothing much of a change within our non-personnel, we're not increasing anything on our capital, uh, side of things. We are purchasing two vehicles, and I'll get into that as well. Stormwater budget, um, we have, uh, from, from there, it's, uh, decreased, um, essentially on those side of things, mainly due to the fact that, uh, we, uh, had some seasonal employees that, uh, we decided, uh, when we hadn't hired for the last couple of years. So from that point, we took those out of that budget, so that's the majority of the hundred-and-nine-thousand-dollar cost from there. So again, stormwater fund, um, that is a percentage of, uh, uh, the unincorporated, uh, areas of the county pay a percentage of their tax bill that goes towards the stormwater fund, that's the collection of that. Move to the water rotary side of things. On the water rotary, um, there is a, uh, fee that's collected, um, as part of the GCWW, Greater St. Saint Water Works, um, bills, and which goes towards the collection of this fund. Uh, we use that, uh, fund to maintain fire hydrants in the system, with the twelve townships. Uh, we also contract with twenty-three other agencies. The only increase that you'll see there, um, or, or the large increase which we see there, because of the backlog of parts and availability, um, of those and the demand of our customers, uh, we have decided to increase the amount of fire hydrants and appurtenances that, uh, we purchase uh, on an annual basis to keep up with that demand. Essentially, the communities which we contract with pay us back for those services via contract, and we need to make sure we have the available materials to keep fire hydrants in service. It's a very important thing, as you obviously know, fire hydrants are used for, uh, to fight fires and fire firemen. So making sure that we, those are in service is a very important thing for us. So availability is a, a big thing, so we've adjusted that. So those are the numbers, as you see, uh, on the bottom, we have a one additional employee this year, uh, in the general fund, and that is a position which is through the Development Services Department. Um, it's, uh, our zoning, uh, plans exam, excuse me, that's a zoning planner. Um, and they would be utilized to, uh, report on activity that comes in on the plant, on planning services. Um, and I will get into that in a little second on the next slide here. So I'll, I'll jump to, uh, initially, I'll go, I mentioned on the highlights there, uh, some of the things that, uh, previously discussed. Um, but, uh, one of the things that I do want to mention on the stormwater and water rotary, uh, highlights is the field, uh, uh, operations facility. I think that you've all been out there with a five-one-three relief bus. Um, we are doing a, uh, some construction out there, uh, this year on, uh, the twenty-twenty-three budget. Uh, we've allocated to, um, uh, a two-hundred thousand dollars for that and two-hundred thousand dollars out of next year's. It's a renovation of that facility, and, uh, that work should be starting in the spring of next year. Um, again, that's a continuation of that activity. So we look forward to, uh, completing that project next year. Uh, the, uh, additional, um, vehicles and, uh, equipment that we have, uh, coming forth, uh, we have two zoning inspection, uh, vehicles. We have our two-thousand-and-sixteen vehicles, they obviously do a lot of miles and do any inspection. So it's, uh, uh, a, uh, making sure that we keep those vehicles, uh, current. Uh, there, those vehicles are out of warranty, so we have decided those are on a replacement schedule. We also have one vehicle for stormwater, and, uh, we're also purchasing a, a new backhoe for water rotary. Those are the, the vehicles and equipment that we're purchasing this year to make sure that we can keep operational as a department. Um, I alluded to earlier, the zoning position, uh, that we are asking for. Um, one of the exciting things that we did in this last year or so was a model zoning code. And the model zoning code is, um, un- unlike building codes, there's a one singular building code for commercial and residential. Zoning codes are different within all jurisdictions, so each jurisdiction has a separate zoning code. Even our townships have different zoning codes. We have the resident rural zoning code of Hamilton County, which only covers four townships. The rest of the townships and municipalities all have separate zoning codes. And one of the things that we wanted to do was create a model zoning code as a base, so the communities could use that zoning code and not change their zoning, but, you know, use, if you have a A zoning, your A zoning in this place is half acre lots for this community, well, it might be, you know, uh, three-quarters of an acres in another community. Establishing the parking is always section twelve. So we create this model zoning code so communities can then utilize, and then people can, uh, their areas of, for development and say, hey, I'm gonna look in the parking section, it's always in chapter twelve. And so it creates it easier for development to come in and work with us. So, uh, thanks, you know, and help, um, to the RPC as well that, uh, provided some funding on that side of things. Our community planning staff also, um, has been working with two communities this year. We look to bring those communities on the next year and then bring in additional communities, which, um, will, will, we can, that, or they can utilize that zoning code. So that, you know, we are foreseeing that additional communities can then come into us, because we already administer four zoning jurisdictions, so it's hard for us to actually, um, uh, administer new codes. So if you have a model zoning code in which one of the communities we currently do will be switching over to that, we will understand and know that code. We have had several communities come to us and ask us, can you administer our code? And one of the things is, hey, let's wait till we get this model zoning code in place, and then we can work with you to fit your zoning code in there. Now, I could mention a few of the communities which would very much benefit from this, and yes, we are working with those communities to bring them forth. We can only do a few at a, at a time. So working with those communities, we still need staff to be able to, to administer that, and that's where the zoning comes in. So a, a community right now still maintains that local control, but we would need a planner to review if they had a new development come in. We'd still have to present a review of that, uh, project for them and go out and present it to them. But their zoning code would be up to date and modern. It costs a lot of money to go out and purchase a, uh, have a hired consultant to do all this work to bring in a new and updated zoning code. So many of the communities we work with have twenty, thirty, forty-year-old zoning codes, because it costs a lot of money to do that, and they're, they're focused... And they're, they're focused on, you know, fire, police, roads. And that is a priority, but this is a way that we can help, you know, on the development services side. So that is the one new position. Sorry, I went on a little long. Sometimes I talk, I said I would be brief. All right, so the other thing is, you've, you've heard for a while we've been talking about this new permitting system. This is really going to help, this is a game changer. Quarter one, it should be in place. We're finally, finally getting there. We want it to be right for our customers. We want this to be a great launch. So you'll hear more about that, and that's digital permitting. That is, stay in your house, you can submit your permit, you can pay for it, and then you can receive it, you know, from that point. You don't have to come down here. We love to see people at the same point. You know, we want to make it easier and better for business, better for residents. So overall, that's what we're trying to do. There'll be more on that to come, so we'll have a presentation in front of you on that. With that, I told you I'd be brief. There you go. Thank you very much. Any questions for me?
Thank you, I'll open it up. Vice President Drehouse.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you for the presentation. If you could just explain to me, under the 2024 budget, you said you hired, the cost will include a new zoning plans examiner for fifty-three thousand. But I noticed when we looked at employees, it was forty-six point three employees, and then for twenty-four, forty-six point six employee. Is that a consultant? Would the zoning examiner be a consultant?
You're very astute in that, and I was going to, John has raised his hand, and I noted, noticed that earlier. So our numbers are slightly different, and we had this conversation.
I assured James in advance of the presentation that the commissioners wouldn't pick up on that.
Okay, okay.
Right now, we're, we're working with, with the office to determine what's the difference on the FTE counts. Their, their numbers are slightly different from our numbers, so we're having to reconcile that.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you so much.
I have one question. On the revenue side, except permits, we're going up, the amount of people getting permits?
So.
But on here, you have.
Yeah, in 2022, we had a record year in permits, all right? If I'm correct. And then this year, we are gearing towards numbers that are consistent with more twenty-one and nineteen. So looking at how numbers are tracking and looking at past data, I can look at models and tell you that we are going to end up lower, all right? And from a revenue base and also on a permit side of things, valuation, we're going to track a little lower as well. So revenue side, you know, last, for the, the budget for last year was a four point five million dollars. And as usually you kind of, the thought was, looking at twenty-two data, when we put the twenty-three budget together, it was, you know, oh wow, you know, the trends are this way. But I knew that that was somewhat of anomaly at the time coming out of COVID and the fact that they hadn't done things for a while, that they'd put off projects, and there was a delay in getting labor and so forth. So that was a little bit of an overshot from there, and then it's dialed back a little bit for this year on the budget. So I think we'll probably end up in the middle. I say this, I think every year. I'm not a sort of a tea reader, tea leaf reader, so, but I do kind of understand how the dynamics work, and I think that we'll be a little between there.
Okay, great. And then on the digital, I know that's an option. Would that be like an option? It won't cut out if someone did want to just come in person?
If somebody, yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to come here, definitely. That's where, we are maintaining our lobby to make sure that people can walk in and speak with us, talk with us, you know, and go through that process. Because we know not everybody is a digital savant. Nobody, you know, not everybody, you know, knows how to use a mobile phone to make an application and submit things like that. We're here to provide service for the full gam, the full range of our users and our residents because we know not everybody has that ability to submit. I know there's going to be somebody that says, I don't have a computer. We're still going to be able to work with you.
Gotcha, okay. Well, thank you. There's no further questions on that. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our last presentation. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.